I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. There will be a special Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, February 2nd at 7:00 PM. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, February 9th at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. Thank you. Chairperson's report. I'll be brief. We have a lot to do as we continue to go through the budget process this evening. It's already been a busy week and it is only Tuesday. And I would just ask that we continue to work together as a community. Everyone's voice is important. The goal of the district always has been to get the students back in the school with their teachers. That is the goal of the teachers. They want to be with our students also. I would ask that we continue to be professional, continue to be civil, continue to understand that the best place to get information is to go through the local administration of your schools, come to the board members that you know, go to the administration office. There's a lot of information out there. We want to make sure everyone understands what's correct. Things continuously change and Dr. Adley and his team are continuously looking at all kinds of data to make these decisions. While we want the children in school, let's keep in mind also there are close to 800 teachers, administrators, nurses, maintenance folks, and all those folks have to be taken into the equation when we make decisions about schools opening or about putting people, putting our students back in school. So that's a whole nother population that we have to think about from a staffing and an operational standpoint. So let's continue to work together as community, patience, professionalism, and civility as we go forward. We are, have a lot going on and we have a lot going on for us as a, as a district. So let's continue to keep the focus on that. Thank you. We will move on now to public comment. Michelle?
Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you're unmuted for public comments. You will have up to three minutes to comment.
Hi, Michelle?
Yes?
I will make one comment. It's important that we hear from everyone and we want to hear from everyone. Everyone's voice is important. As I said, we have a lot to work on as we go through the budget process. I don't, I want everyone to have their voice heard. You're always welcome to email and send stuff into the Board and the administration. If there's people that are speaking and you agree with what they said prior to your speaking, we'd love to have your name and address and acknowledgement that you agree with what's been said, but you want it to be heard. So I just offer that out there. We're happy to hear from everyone, but just wanted to make that offer. Thank you. Thanks, Michelle.
You're very welcome. Our first speaker tonight, Katie Gale. You are unmuted and recognized. Katie Gale, you are still muted.
Mrs. Gale?
We can come back?
Let's move on.
Jonathan Dunn. Oh, Katie Gale, you are-
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
That's all right, Mrs. Gale. Please go ahead.
Great. Katie Gale, Beechwood Drive, Stanford, Connecticut, Henley School teacher. Good evening. I just would like to thank the Board for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I really want to share what our Henley School fifth graders did today. They have all just competed, completed writing a feature article, which is a nonfiction piece on the topic of their choice. And oh, the choices. Everything from how stars are formed to bulldogs, why we need sleep, to football and Lyme disease. They have worked hard to research, draft, and revise, 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 using the lessons we have taught them about structure, elaboration, craft, use of analogies and anecdotes, transition language, and tech features. Today, we had a share, right? Each fifth grade teacher hosted a Zoom that had students from all three classes mixed in. We opened breakout rooms with students from each class and let them share. These students shared their screens and read their pieces by way of presentation. And as they- They had their own writing checklist in their hand.
Yeah, it's a-
So they could notice what the-
Mrs. Gale?
Gale, I'm gonna ask you to pause.
We're hearing background noise?
It's not me.
Okay.
I've got, I've got my phone on. That's all.
Great, thank you. You're, you're cutting in and out a little bit, but we did have some background noise. But please continue. Thank you. Mrs. Gale, can you hear us? Mrs. Gale? Please continue. Thank you.
We, we opened breakout rooms with students from each class and let them share. These students all shared their screens and read their pieces by way of presentation. As they listened to their peers, they had their own writing checklist in their hands so they could notice what the author had done well from our lessons. And on top of that, they all had a shared Jamboard, which is a, a place where you can put virtual sticky notes. And they made comments to their peers about what they noticed that they're, that they did well in their pieces. It was a wholly remarkable experience. Not only can they do some terrific writing, but they can make a Zoom presentation at least as well as many adults I have seen. Oh, there were glitches brought on by teachers and tech and students figuring it out. But thankfully, these students are tech savvy troubleshooters and they corrected them. My point is amazing things like this are happening in every classroom, in every school in this district, every day, and they have been all along. I just want to be sure the community knows this because I fear this isn't spotlighted in the manner it should be. These children are resilient and so are these teachers. I myself am a part of the over 60 set. I'm a true digital-
Almost at time, Mrs. Gale.
Great teaching and learning is happening in Darien every day. I would love to thank the parents who have been supportive to teachers all along and continue to support us as we look to be part of the conversation about what is safe for the health and wellbeing of our students and ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Gale.
Jonathan Dunn, you are unmuted and recognized.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan. We have learned over these trying months that schools are one of the safest places for our children to be. As parents, we must continue to make smart, safe decisions so that our children can continue to be in school full time. Data from the state, excuse me, data from the state shows that in-person learners are experiencing the lowest COVID key slots of all three learning models. Well, it's encouraging to hear that Superintendent Adley has introduced a plan to return all middle school and high schoolers back to the classroom full time. I would respectfully request him to reconsider his staggered approach and instead return all students to school immediately. Certain grades should not have to wait a month to return to full in-person learning when we know the risks are minimal. For town officials, COVID spread has been a result of social gatherings and travel. We also know that Darien is behind in its hours. As a Tocanyk parent, we even need to make up an extra day as a result of the fall storm. So if COVID is caused by social gatherings and travel and we're all behind in our hours, why is the administration still pushing ahead with a full February vacation? Students' last day at school is Thursday, February 11th. Don't forget, Friday, February 12th is professional development. Classes resume on Monday, February 22nd. Given the precedent set earlier this month, a week of remote learning following February break would not be surprising. Given these factors, wouldn't a simple and effective solution be canceling or at the very least truncating February break to discourage student travel and social gatherings outside of school as well as to provide the opportunity to make up some lost class time? I strongly urge Superintendent Adley to consider this common sense solution. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Julie Best, you are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Julie Best. I live at 38 Red Rose Circle. I'm a co-chair of the Council of Darien School Parents. Thank you for the chance to speak this evening. These are unbelievably difficult times. We do not expect unanimous agreement on how to proceed at each turn because this is still uncharted and complicated territory. But from the conversations we're having and the feedback we're getting, one thing seems certain. We, Darien's parents, are in a lot of different places. We have different priorities. We have different concerns. Whether driven by our child's needs or their passions, we have different ideas of what we just can't live without any longer. We're all trying our best to figure out what's right and the right answers look different for every one of us. But we have to remember that we're still living in a time of compromise. We continue to need to make concessions for the good of the Darien community overall and for the Darien Public Schools community. And we have to remember the compromise is hard because it means we're giving up things that are important to us, every single one of us. We're thankful that the administration and the Board of Ed continue to make the best decisions that they can for our schools with all of the inputs available to them. We're thankful for our teachers for supporting our students and each other in the best ways they can find to do so. And we're thankful for the parents and kids for voicing their support and concern constructively. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Best.
Jennifer Ladd, you are recognized and unmuted.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Ladd and I've been teaching at Darien High School for 15 years. My primary concern has always been the health and safety of my students. At the end of September, when we first brought all students back into the high school, I was nervous. The little data we had at the time about how safe the building would be with everyone there regarding ventilation or students eating lunch with their masks off was offset by the low rates of infection in the community and the state. I understood that the health metrics indicated that we should at least try to bring students fully back into the building. At that point, we had recorded not a single COVID case at the high school. As cases began to rise at a faster rate in November, the data suggested the high school pull back to hybrid mode. Dr. Adley's communication in November to move back to hybrid cited three health measures. Average daily cases per 100,000 in Darien and Fairfield County as well as the percentage of red zones in Connecticut. In November, cases per 100,000 in Darien were 13.5. Now they are 56.5. Fairfield County was 34 per 100,000 in November. It is now 50 per 100,000. In November, 80% of Connecticut was in the red zone. Today, every town in Connecticut is in the red zone except for five in the northern part of the state. These were the metrics being used by the district to determine safety in November and the reason given for why we moved to hybrid. All of the indicators are now worse. The communication sent by Dr. Adley last Friday about the decision to immediately bring seniors fully back to the high school on Monday did not include any health metrics. I am also extremely concerned at the rate at which Darien High School students are contracting COVID. In November, there were five cases reported at DHS in the week before the learning model was moved from full in-person to hybrid. Last week, in the lead up to the announcement on Friday, there were 17 cases reported at the high school. Since the announcement, another 12 cases have been reported. And finally, there is an increasing concern about transmissibility and mortality of the new variants, which will continue to increase from the handful of cases in Connecticut right now. Darien families and the Board of Ed should be asking why there was no scientific data sent with the most recent announcement to transition all students back to the high school. Your responsibility extends beyond what students learn in the classroom. The scientific community is scrambling to understand the full impact of COVID on the long-term health of those who recover. I strongly urge Dr. Adley-
You're almost at time.
-to keep the high school in hybrid mode until the health metrics indicate it is safe for all students to return. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Ladd.
Duke, I need her address.
Oh, could we have your address, Mrs. Ladd?
I live in Stanford, 44 Brock Hall Lane.
Thank you.
Lily Worm, you are recognized and unmuted.
Hi, it's actually Tara Worm. Apparently I don't own anything of my own anymore. Good evening. My name is Tara Worm and I live at 17 Mystic Lane. I am here as DAEG advocacy co-chair to speak on behalf of our gifted and talented community. For those who have been in attendance at many BOE and administrative meetings, the mantra to support all learners is repeatedly heard. However, year after year, we have to defend the tiny piece of the pie allocated to our gifted students. We are told time and again, we are lucky they get anything at all because legally, they only have to be identified and not supported. But as our Darien Public Schools philosophy states, "Schools exist for children and our mission is to work collaboratively with families to provide an intellectually challenging learning environment that promotes personal excellence." Tonight, we would like to specifically respond to some of the questions posed by the BOE last week regarding the ninth grade Achievers program. One, is achievers necessary? Honestly, no, but neither is music, art, sports, and any elective at the high school. That doesn't mean they aren't academically, socially, and physically challenging. Two, does it provide something that honors and APs can't? Yes, the Achievers project is the only true self-directed option at the high school. Even ASR has a defined path that needs to be followed. Three, is this the best use of funds? Let's put the amount of funds in perspective. The gifted program from second to ninth grade is allocated $296,000. Achievers represents $14,953 of that amount. Let us compare that to sports. Sports programs at MMS are 42,000. Elementary intramurals, 10,000. High school intramurals, 4,000. High school team sports is 1.3 million and 300,000 of that is for equipment and uniforms alone, which is slightly more than our retired gifted education budget. We are not suggesting that cuts be made to sports as we believe sports are a very important part of the social and mental wellbeing of our students. The real question though is, are we doing enough for our gifted learners? There has been promise of a formal review of the idea program for several years that has yet come to fruition and now is the time. We continue to hear the same feedback from parents in the DAEG community year after year. Things like, and I quote, "Why can't my child be more challenged in math? She's in fourth grade and incredibly bored." And, "Why is the criteria for sixth grade math placement communicated to parents after the assessment tools like the OSATs have already been taken? Why wouldn't the district want to encourage the best possibility of placements by making the process clear to parents and students upfront?" And, "I have never heard of eighth grade advanced English, but apparently it is a course offering. My child, child told me they took a test that is used as a placement criteria."
You're almost at time, Mrs. Worm.
Yes. I will cut down to the end. While we appreciate having been part of the initial strategic planning process, we respectfully ask that the administration and Board of Education ensure that the needs of our gifted learners are part of year one priorities when implementing the new plan. This will show a commitment from the district to make sure our gifted learners receive the same attention and thoughtfulness as all learners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Worm.
Username anonymous DHS student, you are recognized and unmuted. Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm a student at Darien High School and will not be saying my name or address for privacy reasons. Tonight, I am expressing my-
Sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. We can't accept that public comment unless you provide your name and address. We cannot accept anonymous.
Perhaps they could send us a letter.
Yes. Thank you, Jill. If you'd like to send a letter into the Board, we would welcome that. Okay, thank you.
There are no more raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you to those people who are tuning in this evening. We were pleased to welcome back our 12th graders and eighth graders this week. And just as Mrs. Gale said, I just want to thank the administration and the teachers for their preparation, their care, and their effort because all the things that Mrs. Gale saw, I was able to witness in all of the schools yesterday, so I thank them for that. Want to recognize a couple of our students this evening. And I'll just note that at a different date, we'll come back to the student representatives on the Board whenever we have, we've got a reflective time to do that. But we have a couple of kids who were, have won the American Revolution Essay winners, recognized. First place, Georgina Capella from Tocanyk. Second place was Madeline Wren, also from Tocanyk. Third place was Noah Pughn from Royal. Honorable mention, Cara McElroy from Tocanyk. And from the Henley School, Momo Shuman. I'm sure I should not pronounce that exactly right. Forgive me if I didn't. But congratulations to those students. Also want to formally recognize Nicole Shonoy Crocker, who is the media specialist at Tocanyk also. We did mention this in the, but this is the formal recognition of it. She was recipient of the 2025 Award from the Connecticut School of Schools for librarian primarily for innovative, creative lessons that are presented in libraries. Congratulations. Want to thank our Oxford students too. If you've been able to see the hill, I think they all wanted to slide down it today. But Dr. Forshaw put the next on that. But thank you to our parents. It's a tight stamp right there. It's only when you're actually driving in, driving out, you actually realize how little space is there. Staff are parking right in the back, right on the side. They're doing a tremendous job and it's up and running. It's nice to see it taking shape. Also want to thank the high school for organizing in particular. Megan Manulson, we all know Megan. Megan's the Director of Guidance. We do a fabulous job. If you didn't get a wee opportunity to see it, you can see it on the website. Our alumni, several of our alumni came back remotely and shared what they learned, what they would like to see, what would have been helpful to them, and shared some wisdom through our seniors and juniors. And that's a three-part series, so you can certainly catch up with it on Netflix. So many of the students successfully completed the fitness assessment. So want to recognize that the physical education staff, teaching is difficult too as a classroom teacher, but so is all of these enrichment and other opportunities that we provide our students and all of our staff have been very, very creative. There is an open choice piece of legislation, SB 255, that is being presented by Senator Casco, Duff, and Kushner. So we'll, we'll follow that and that's to expand open choice in this region. The Thriving Youth Community Fund, the Youth Asset Survey was administered today at the middle school and it will be administered throughout the week. And maybe one or two of the high school already taken it. It depends on when their health classes is. So that will be completed this particular week or over the next two weeks there. Strategic planning, we've had an opportunity, Christopher and myself, an opportunity to meet with Richard a couple of times. And I know at the last meeting, there was a concern about can we, can we sort of separate it from the budget and keep it away from the budget? Would ask the Board and they'll send them just an invitation perhaps for Monday, February 23rd. We do have a 24th meeting. I'd really prefer, if we can help it, I'd like to not wait till everything's over just to keep the momentum. We're ready to go. We'll get the stuff out to the Board early. So it's in a really good place. Your comments were received, recorded. We re-watched the, the Board meeting as well, just to make sure everybody was captured. So I think we've done that. So we're in a good place to continue to move forward. The Facilities Committee, the work behind the scenes there with the administration and refining some of the plans to bring back. So we're closing in on being ready to do that. I will make a communication to the Facilities Chair and members. And we have a meeting on February 4th. It would be awful to have that meeting on February 10th with a little bit left just to actually complete with the architect. But anyway, we're in a good shape there. We're coming back and I'm excited to present the administrative recommendation based on the feedback from the Board the last time. I do have to flag just for this particular year, our excess cost. And for this particular year, it's not pertaining to next year's budget, but there's a good likelihood that, that we will receive above forecast about $550,000. It's very unusual, but the 65, the 67.5% reimbursement has gone up to 83. Primarily, the indicators are the state that people have not filed because it's closed, we're not filed, but not filed, filed their amounts or higher amounts. So there's a pot and that pot has grown and so therefore we get a bigger slice of that. So it won't be finalized until March sometime, but it looks like it. That's, that's the direction we're going. The time will also receive an additional $13,000 to its educational cost sharing grant. So that, that, that sort of follows on top of the excess cost. So that will be an extra $13,000 and that will go directly to the time. And I believe that concludes my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Any Board Committee reports? Mrs. Stein? Sorry. Jumping ahead. Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting and executive session held on January 12th, 2021. Mrs. Stein and Mrs. Ockman, thank you. All in favor? That's unanimous. Minutes of the regular, a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on January 12th, 2021. Mr. Maroni, Mrs. Ritchie, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. And a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting held on January 19th, 2021. Mrs. Parent and Mr. Maroni, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to Board Committee reports. Mrs. Stein?
The Policy Committee met last Thursday. We had a first discussion on the five policies we'll be seeing later tonight. We did agree as a group that the February 10th meeting will be canceled. We will resume in March.
Thank you, Mrs. Maroni.
For everyone's calendars.
Mrs. McCann?
The Communications Work Group has been working. We've been quiet, but we have been working. We have a little bit more to do and we'll work with Duke to about the best time to get back to the Board, but we are-
Great. Thank you, Mrs. McCann. Any additional Board Committee reports? Just a quick update. Alan touched base on it. Ox Ridge Building Committee, the next meeting will be Friday, January 29th at 10:00 AM. The building, the construction up there is in full swing. It is a tight site. Bad weather doesn't help. Hopefully, there won't be a lot of snow. But we'll figure out from a Board perspective at different points in time for potential view as to what's going on up there. We're trying to keep it very restricted, have specific members of the committee that will be part of change orders and other decisions that need to be made quickly so we keep the, the whole build kind of on the timetable that it's on. So a lot of good things going on up there. Yes?
Jill, has the committee, is the Communications Working Group changed? Who's on it? Because I don't think anyone knew it was meeting or working.
In November, we were, it was assigned with the, well, maybe Duke can answer.
The working group?
Yeah, the work group was on that.
I missed it. Can you tell me? So I know-
Yeah, I can refresh my memory too. I can't remember. I know it's Dennis. It's Dave, Dennis, and myself.
Yep. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, when did you last meet? We've done a lot of our work through email because it's easier to communicate and then this COVID environment.
Good.
Can we just get an update maybe on that next?
Yes, they're, they're going to provide an update. We'll work on getting that on the agenda. Thank you. So I just asked, you know, everyone be cautious. We've worked very closely with police on safety up there. It is a tight area. Drop off and pickup. We accept any and all feedback and Dr. Forshaw has done a great job kind of managing the site and the students, the parents, and the teachers have done a great job up there as that exciting project has kicked off.
Can I make one recommendation?
Yes.
Please take the bus if you can.
Good. All right. Moving on to presentations and discussions. Darien Public Schools Status Update, Dr. Adley.
Well, suffice to say, this was the topic of, the topic of the week, I guess, right? I'm happy to feed questions from the Board. The one piece of good news, I can share with you this evening, we have no COVID cases. So that's, that's a good thing.
Knock on wood, right?
That is a good thing. And I'm happy to address some of the comments of, of sort of lightly, but then just open up the floor for discussion on, on some of the issues. And I'll try and touch a page, some, some of the things that were said online just to try and give some context to a little bit. So tonight, just want to give you a wee bit of update on the cases and the transition plan, number of remote learners you have asked for, like that are regular, can we, can see that on a regular basis? And a wee bit on the instructional hours. Actually, I'll go back to front. How about instructional hours first? I just heard last night from the State Department of Education, from their academic office, that what we have submitted to them and how they have reviewed our calendar and our daily schedule with one modification, that they are willing, not they're willing, that they are, they, they are telling us that it does meet the criteria of the Connecticut State Department of Education guidelines. So the one caveat that we're doing, they ask- So the one caveat that we're doing, they ask, could we consider going all day remote on Friday? I said I didn't think that'd be a good idea. They thought it was a good idea in terms of making up more time, but that's not the case. So there will be two hours, not this Friday coming, starting the following Friday. There will be two hours of asynchronous middle school, high school, or I'll say that before. For elementary students, for those students who wish to avail themselves of that time, we'll be happy to share that with our constituents by the end of this week. But we've got, again, that was the chief academic officer, they pass it through the chief academic office, and we receive the 894 for some students, that that's what we would have. It's not just a straightforward, it's straight, there's different flexibility that, that there is, particularly in the morning, whenever we drop kids off. Not every kid gets, gets dropped off at the same time because we stagger the buses because we don't want everybody lined up and so on and so forth. And anyway, they have reviewed it, they're supporting the plan with the additional two hours of optional asynchronous learning on the Friday afternoon for elementary students. We do have to, this was just right off communication late last night. So I do have to work with our teachers and our union just to, just to review that and what that actually looks like on the ground. But essentially, there'll be opportunities for students to track what they're doing and coordinate with teachers. But again, I have to sort of discuss that in a wee bit more detail. But essentially, you've got two hours of asynchronous learning in the afternoon. And with that, that they have approved our plan, which I'm very appreciative of. The number of learners, so we just kept track of this for the board. And so as of the 19th, we dropped a little bit. So it's down to 555. The colors, Christopher will have more details for you. They represent the various grade levels and respect to be able to read those. That's just a big high level picture of it, the board asked to track it. So that's what we have. So just some of the data from, from last week. This was what's in the board's packet. What is posted online tonight is what I have up here, which is an additional slide. This is the additional slide. So this was as of when I sent it last week, and this is as of this morning. So you can see the number of cases, and yes, we did have more cases at the high school. Cases that we've had another significant quarantines, and we've quarantined a number of teams. The teams are really not happening in school per se. It's, it's some of the stuff that's happening outside of school is causing the teams to be quarantined. So we'll monitor that and see how much of a disruption it may or may not be. But that's kind of, again, we're not seeing this, we are not seeing this spread in the school. I will say some of these, some of these numbers here that were referred by John, and I very much appreciate it. Early on, this was the metric. And perhaps I or in general, people haven't been clear about the state of Connecticut, but they were about to pull that addendum off the table of 25. If you remember, you had the heat map where they transitioned now. They don't want you to use a hard and fast number because back at the start, if we had had that, everybody would be in a school. But there's new learnings that has taken place. I'm not the expert, but we have learned, the medical profession has learned stuff that, how to deal with this, how to mitigate it. Some things are surprising, some things aren't. And really, that 25, I said here some months ago, that that's not a hard by any means, or else nobody would be in school at the moment. I will say this, I talked to Dr. Carter today and also last week before we had the meeting with our health professionals. What did you see, like Princeton last night, if you happen to see the news in the United Kingdom and around Europe about this, this new virus and the new spread and what they're saying, schools over there have been closed. He's predicting potentially that it could get worse in March, as we hit the March. So part of the data that I looked at, which I'll just, I'll just go through a couple of things of mine. For a few, this, this has increased again, so that's probably not surprising to you, but, but for a few has continued to increase. This is what the data is for the time, and it's more, I'll say it's more or less right because there's just a wee few discrepancies here and there with dates and just a day when people report stuff, what they put in. But essentially, there's, there's agreement. So in the last couple of weeks, we have gone down from 91, 62 to 33 cases in time. So the cases in time have, have been dropping. So that was another piece of information when we met with our health officials. That was a difficult meeting last week. I will share this with you. I think I've shared, we meet every, every week. Dr. Carter, their departments, they meet every week. This is a daily, weekly change and practices. It's fast changing. I've tried to flag that this would, the changes would come in this nature. We tried the schedule for this week, or last week was the meet on Wednesday. And we couldn't do that for another responsibility at the hospital that Dr. Kevick had. So we weren't able to do that. We get on Thursday. When we meet on Thursday, what I have to do after Thursday is not just simply like send it to parents, right? There's lots of communications, there's lots of discussions with, I have to meet with my administrative team here. I have to meet with all the principals, right? I have to communicate the fact that to my board members through the board chair. We have to do food, transportation, and all, make sure all things are planned for. So I don't mean to give people a last minute notice, but here's the deal. If we want to transition people back to school, and it was felt reasonable that we could do it, reducing the, or increasing the density slowly. The agreement at that meeting was, we do not want all the kids, children back before the break. That was from very clear that that's not, that's just a, that's not a practice we want to see in the town at the moment, at the season we want to see. But moving in the direction to have everybody back, it felt it was reasonable to increase the density, and let's see what happens. This seemed like a reasonable thing to do. If we, if I came to this meeting like tonight, right, and said, well, I have a plan now for next week. First of all, you've lost a week. Secondly, by the time I put it on the table and we have discussion about it, we may defer to another meeting. And you're going, every week it goes by, kids are not going to be in school. And it's going to be very, very difficult to move the discussion forward, as difficult as it is at the moment. So there was a wee window of opportunity, potentially, with the understanding that it may actually get worse in March. So do we want to try and do it? Is it reasonable to try and do it? We felt that it was. And in order to space it a little bit, to give some reflection time in there, as late as it was on Friday in terms of for, for Monday. But I respect what teachers have to do, even though they're in school, there's kids in front of them. I need to take that very much into consideration. But the window of opportunity is one, is now. And if we don't do that, the consensus of the professionals that March will be potentially, potentially it could be worse now. Maybe it's not. I'm hoping to get the younger children back and be able to manage it, but we'll have to see how it goes. Those honestly were the factors, the process that went into the decision-making for last week. I'll certainly continue to open the floor for discussion about that. Let me see if I have anything else. Did I cover my agenda items quickly? Remote learners, I think, yeah, I'll just open the floor if you don't mind. I think, I think I've sort of covered the bases.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Mrs. Parent.
I have a couple of questions. I'll just, like, easier one first. Chris, do you know if the number of remote learners has increased this week or not? Anecdotally, I've just heard that there's a, a big group of, maybe not big, but a group of high school students that are in fear of being contact traced, so therefore choosing to go remote. Is that a small number? Or is that a juvenile?
I don't have the updated numbers for this week yet, but I will have it for next week because this is a reoccurring slide now.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ritchie.
So I'll just, it's the same question that I had, but I'll just add to that, that I am hearing. And by the way, thank you, Dr. Adley, and thank you to everyone for all your hard work on this. I know it's a very fluid situation and decisions are made quickly, and hopefully we can all be adaptable. And I thank you for all your hard work. I am hearing that with the change to gradually bringing back students, I'm hearing from parents that some will be switching to remote. You know, heads up on that. I have friends that have reached out to me. And based on their individual personal concerns, they will be going remote. So I would anticipate that that number is probably going to go up.
Any further questions or comments? Mr. Seeny.
So, Dr. Adley and your team, I applaud you looking at some other data. You know, the town data, even if you update it for the daily lagging numbers, which that 33 is not right. It's high. It's still headed in the right direction. So thanks for recognizing that on a local basis. I guess the one question I have, like, focusing on two grades and then implementing grade by grade, how do you ensure equity of educational plans and just educations throughout the student body versus some sort of, you know, we've seen in other districts, excess hybrid or uber hybrid?
Yeah, could you tell me what that means? Because I was told that that was, I was told that was going to be implemented two weeks ago.
Yeah, but that same district also has their full middle school in too. So I mean, there's.
They also work, they have been in as long as we have, just for the record.
I hate to compare our rivals too often. But, but in all seriousness, can you talk about how you're ensuring equity? And maybe how you came to the eighth grade and the seniors? Having senior last year and knowing what the second semester year is all about, you know? Just help us walk through that decision.
I appreciate the question, John. The equity question is always a question, right? But in a pandemic, the first thing that comes to, the priority over equity is safety. We have an inequity right now. We have young kids in. You may not think that's an inequity, but you still have young, young kids in, elementary kids in, and other kids not in. Right? What's the difference between a fifth grader and a sixth grader? So we have that situation already set up. It's just a, it's just a safety thing, primarily just primarily safety. Unfortunately, the experiences, where no one's going to pretend to experience that the children get at home is, is the same as what you get in the classroom, right? That, that's why we have school. And we recognize that, and we try to replicate it as best as possible. But, but when safety comes first, that equity of the experience is sacrificed to a degree. The actual 12th grader and eighth grader, I lean heavily on our administrators at those particular schools. The communication basically that without were reflective of the 12th graders that they've missed a lot of experiences and so on and so forth. And they are also getting prepared to make a transition to post-secondary. You could have a different opinion on that. People could say, well, the most important grade level, I've been feeling questions from parents all weekend about grade levels. The 11th grade is most important grade, and I can see how you're arguing that, right? Or a seventh grader is more important, or about the sixth grade. So there's no magic in that. The eighth grade, I think if I can speak for the summers, is essentially before they go to high school for preparation, let's get as much makeup as we can for them before they actually transition with our younger children. As much as it's hard to see them out, they have a longer, we have a longer time in the school to sort of make it up. That's the process. That's not a perfect, I'm sure that's not a perfect solution, but it seemed reasonable to me. But you can certainly argue, and I know it's put parents in different sort of positions. I'm certainly considered of that, but my responsibility is to try to get the kids back in school. And that's what we are trying to do in a thoughtful and measured way. I have to say that the plan itself is still fluid. It can change. The danger of rolling out a schedule, if people get committed to a schedule, you're told we're going to do this, and now we're not. But I'm trying to be responsive to what I hear at the table here from the board every, every two weeks that we discuss about this, and also what I'm hearing from parents and our staff.
Could I, could I just follow?
Sure, Mr. Seeny.
And again, I applaud the initiative. And I think I'm just going to speak for myself, but hopefully the board would be in support that if we try something, it fails over the short term.
Yeah.
You know, I think we should all be ready for that. On the flip side, on my optimistic side, is there any, you know, if the data continues to go in the direction nationally, statewide, regionally, and locally, is there any way we can accelerate that? Or is there a prohibitive nature, you know, just on, I don't know, operationally that would prohibit you from that?
Operationally would be, it just depends what we see on the ground. And I wouldn't say it'd be, it would prohibit the not being advanced it more. But, but it's about as much as the system, right now, I'm just telling you, it's about as much as the system can handle and tolerate. And I think tolerate, but just, it's just, it's a lift, right? People don't have to agree with our teachers, but, but it is representative of the carrot. It's common to time when our teachers were sort of like, let's believe we're going to be, get a vaccine. And that all went haywire with the State Department. They messed that up completely. On top of the weekend, learning about it, then top of the number of cases that, you know, whether they're in school or not, that minimally they're there and they frighten people in some cases and raise their anxiety. So I think I would hope, and I was being hopeful, that this would be a reasonable way and a measured way. And again, in close collaboration with Alicia and our two other health officials, who do a tremendous job for the district in the time. I wouldn't be too optimistic about it, like, because if, if, if March is meant to be what we're seeing in the UK or otherwise, they've closed down the schools, I will say today. Dr. Carter also talked about, it's not unreasonable to think that sometimes the state would take an executive position, which they haven't really done, go close all the schools. That's the first time I've heard that for, for potential in sometime in March. He actually put that on the table today. So, yeah, at the same time, he said, there's this window, so.
Mr. Brown.
Thanks. Just three quick points. I'll try to be brief. The question about the instructional hours, and we had a question about February break. Do we have a need for making up time at this point? Or based on the conversation the other day, we're going to be on target for instructional hours?
They have accepted our plan, starting in two weeks on Friday, to do two additional hours of optional asynchronous learning for people that would qualify. So, so the answer is no, we don't.
But we're not going, you don't anticipate extra school days or changing vacation to be in.
No. Okay. What I do have to do, we have to make up one, one day for Tokanik.
Got it. Okay. And then just briefly, I was going to echo Mr. Seeny. We do see a trend the other way. I certainly hope that'll be on the table. And then lastly, this may be to Alicia, just in terms of vaccines and vaccination. Do we have anything in terms of staff? And just, this may be my clarification. We're not giving vaccinations. Are there, are there, there's no plans that I saw in the schedule for vaccinations under 16. Is that correct? Or did I misinterpret that broadly for how it will, this is being rolled out?
I didn't catch the last bit of that. There's no plans. Sorry.
So I know we have, I know there's a rollout. I know we have a vaccination rollout for certain people, different groups. If we have any update to the teachers, I know that was an issue that came up. I'd certainly be interested to hear. And then just broadly speaking, we're not vaccinating kids, right? There's no plan to vaccinate under 16 at any time?
Correct.
Okay.
So not under 16, there are kids who are working at post 53 or volunteering there, and they are allowed to be vaccinated if they're 16 and up. But right now, no other plans. They haven't studied it in kids yet. As far as getting vaccination for teachers, that's been just kind of a roller coaster ride. And it looks like the planned rollout for teacher vaccination, according to their timeline right now, is for the end of February, early March, which is disappointing, but because we were hopeful that it was going to happen much earlier. But we'll just keep following the conversations at the State Department of Health and Governor Lamont's office as they open that up to more population. But I believe the next phase rollout for 1B, right now it's 75 and up. And then they're going to move to 65 and up. I think they're anticipating that in the next couple of weeks. So we're, you know, we're trying to plan for a couple of different scenarios because we don't know if they're going to continue doing it the way, scheduling vaccine the way they're doing it now, which is you get an invitation that comes directly from the CDC. Once your name is entered into the Vaccine Administration Management System called VAMS, you get an email invite, and you can then go sign up for a clinic anywhere in your area. But I don't know if once they open it up to all school staff towards the end of the rollout of 1B, if they will have a different way to have people be vaccinated. If we can have our own clinics, we'd like to try and figure out a way to schedule that if possible. But right now, that's not how they're doing it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mrs. Ritchie.
Just to go back to the instructional hours. So the, the two hours asynchronous work on Fridays is work they will do at home after they get back from home, from school. And it's optional.
Yes.
And then I just want to follow up on Mr. Brown's question about adding additional school days. Because obviously it just concerns me because contractually, our teachers only work a certain number of days. And we can't start taking away school breaks without decreasing the school year on the other side. So.
Yes, we're not, we're not touching, we're not touching the breaks.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Parent.
Building on the idea of breaks, you know, looking at that bar graph, it was very clear that the week after the winter break, there was a spike. Seeing as our community enjoys traveling and may or may not be needing all guidance. And I, I wonder, is there, is there an idea to go revoke that week, the week after Feb break? Is that something you've thought about? Is that something on our table or is there, are we going to try to avoid that?
Yes, that was, that was communicated in the letter that that week is up for discussion. And that's why we didn't bring any, the young kids in that week with thinking that that's not going to be a good time to bring them back potentially. So I tried to flag that and say that we will look at the, what mode that would be closer to that time and what we learn and what we anticipate. So it's not unreasonable to think that that could be a remote wake-up learning.
My request would be that the sooner parents know that, the better.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent. Any further comments or questions? Yes, Mrs. McCammon. Thank you.
Dr. Radley, could you just expand a little bit more on what Dr. Carter was saying? Was he talking about the new variant? And that, that if, if what happens with the disease changes with these new variants, that that is when we might see the state step in? Is that, is that, do I understand that correctly?
Essentially, if, if what they are seeing, whether it's occurring in the United Kingdom at this point in particular, that is basically in lockdown and all the schools closed. It is interesting though, I've been following the United Kingdom. I have no idea when the kids were in school, why they weren't wearing masks. I have no idea about that. Staff weren't masked either. So that's a different, that's a different discussion, I guess. But what they're seeing there, these aren't anticipating that that may arrive here sooner than later. And the timing of that might be around that March period. So that's, in which case they were considering an executive order from Connecticut to close the schools.
Thank you. Any further, Mrs. Ackman.
I guess Dr. Radley started the conversation saying it was the topic of the week, although we still have budget tonight. So a couple of topics this week. But I guess I just have a plea for civility. You know, the teachers, kind of the characterizations of teachers or the characterization of parents, no matter how strongly they feel one way or the other, the characterization of our administration or of this board, it doesn't help us when we all back into a corner and say only our version is right. I, I think that the more we can start to see that someone has a point or at least a point worth hearing and listening to, the better the community will be and the better the community conversation will be. But I, I just find us polarizing in a time when we need to come together. So I think that Dr. Radley said it well, reasonable people might come up with a different plan. It's the administration's job to come up with a plan. And if, if we can see the reasonableness in it, even if there's shades we might disagree with, I think we'll better, we'll better. And I think that, that goes to everyone, staff, parents, community members, like just things. I mean, I know how many hours go into this as a board member. I know how many hours go in sitting in that board chair seat. I know how many hours go in as that superintendency. There's no one who's taking this frivolously. So I guess that's kind of my, my plea to everyone, and that's not denigrating anyone's viewpoint, but just to realize that there's a lot of viewpoints and there's a lot of expertise looking at it. No one's making decisions in a vacuum.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Well said. Mrs. Parent.
Just briefly, and, and I, I hope that everybody around this table will, will support what I'm going to say is that I, I think we all support our teachers. And I would just throw it out there that if they feel that there's anything they need as we increase the density, that, that we provide them what they need to make sure that they feel that they're safe and healthy.
Thank you for saying that, Mrs. Parent. Thank you. Good. All right. Thank you all. We'll move on to a presentation and discussion, a presentation of proposed new courses for Darian High School for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Dr. Radley, Mr. Tranberg and Mrs. Dunn.
So this just rolls into the budget, but before we sort of discuss the budget, we said we would just touch on the updates on STEM and the team talk classes. So we have the staff here. Thank you for the preparation. Chris, I don't know if you're going to go first or Mrs. Dunn is going to go first.
I thought we were doing the courses maybe?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Thank you. Just stay on, just stay on. Thank you. Sorry. Go ahead. The courses. Thank you.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to give you an update on the course proposals for Darian High School for the coming school year. And the memo that I shared with you, there are several slight changes to current courses that I will walk you through. And then we have the department chairs here and department leaders to talk about courses within their department. Especially want to thank the Curriculum Council led by Caitlin Stanton and for their hard work in bringing forth excellent courses. This council is represented by, a representative of every department is present on the council. The department leaders work within their departments with teachers and courses come through the departments to the council where they are vetted. There's a tremendous amount of work and feedback that goes on about how these courses interact with one another in the school in the best interest of our students. So I want to thank that group and also the departmental council and our central office administration for supporting these courses. So the first proposal is really to allow for our ninth graders to participate in creative writing. There has been some interest shown in recent years for our ninth graders to be allowed to take this course as an elective. Currently, the course is limited to grades ten through twelve. And the department and, and the council have honored that request and, and we ask you to consider that change. Shall I go through those all together and then take them as a group?
Yes, please.
Questions? Okay. A proposal for title change. Again, curriculum is evolving in our drafting program. And the course is really very much focused away from hand drafting into computer aided drafting and design. And so part of the new look of tech ed, I think that we'll be hearing about tonight going into the future, is, is also participating through the CAD design, not only in this course, but also in, in future courses in the tech ed department. So they would like to reflect the, the updates to technology within their course and the title of the course. Video broadcasting is, is something that came up at an earlier meeting. And two things here, we would like to refocus the course on the technical aspects of video broadcasting, appeal to a group of students that we may have been missing by linking this course to the journalism program. And put the course under the umbrella of media within the library and also tech ed, tying in our Blue Wave News Club and the advisor for that club to really put together a collaborative group that can bring us this course back to us. In fact, it did not run this year because there was a very, very low enrollment of under three students. So we are excited about continuing Blue Wave News. It has survived through the work of the club, but it's been difficult for them to do it that way. And we hope to see a revitalization of this course. And we believe that it will, that it will happen under the changes recommended. And finally, the IDEA Program, the Achievers Project Ninth Grade Experience. Over the last, including this year, three years, Emily Bosson has worked closely with these students and has done excellent work. The students are really held to some high expectations, do a tremendous amount of work outside of the course. And the request has come forward from their teacher to reward the work that is being done with a full credit rather than a half credit for the course. And so we know that this has been a topic of conversation as well. But certainly these students are putting in a tremendous amount of work and the product they're producing is excellent. And we support that request as well. So happy to take questions on those first, if you'd like to, before we go to the new courses.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. I will open it up to board questions. Mrs. Ritchie.
Thanks, Mrs. Dunn. I appreciate the update on that. With video broadcasting, this is tied into the project that we're going to see to update the facilities. That's correct?
That's correct.
And I'm just, so does, are we doing that before the, the course gets, the course title gets changed? Or is it going to happen at the same time? The reason I'm asking is just, I'm thinking that if we update the facilities, it could then attract more students to that course. So I'm hoping that when we get the funding to do that, that that becomes then, you know, something more attractive to our students. So I'm just curious about the timing.
I agree. I think our hope is that both would happen at the same time. And, you know, one of the things that we hope for in the, in the improvements to the library when that project eventually moves forward, that really the studio could be used for students in all areas and all disciplines to produce their own product, presentation product in, in any discipline. So we're really hoping to link that studio more closely with the library itself as a learning commons space.
Mrs. Ackman.
Oh, sorry. I was just keying off of that question, but we're talking about redoing the current broadcast studio because.
That's right.
We don't have any update on libraries unless, I don't think there's any facilities or anything that's met to tell us. So we're not tying libraries. We haven't heard anything about that. This would be the money in the budget for the broadcast studio. So this class.
That's right. It's, it's located next door. Right. So ultimately down the road, we're hoping that that would be the case. Right.
Mrs. Stein.
Touching on the idea, the one, raising it to one credit from a point five. I would just re-echo my strong desire to have a program update on IDEA outside the budget process. I think we're putting the cart before the horse, giving this, you know, a full credit before we have a discussion. I mean, anecdotally Greenwich, Cape Canin, Norwalk, Westport, they all end in eighth grade. Other districts identify, don't have programs. I, I want to hear a justification for this program extending into our high school and culminating in ninth grade. I've asked multiple times, could we please add this to the master agenda if other board members are supportive, to have a full programmatic review before we start touching with credits and curriculum?
Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Mrs. Ritchie.
Sorry, this thing's come alive. I just would like to support Mrs. Stein's comment. And I agree, we need to look at the gifted program. I support a gifted program in our schools, but I am struggling with the increase to the, the one credit at this point without really having a complete overview of the program. So I really feel like that, that's what we need to do at this point. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. Mrs. Ackman.
So if we're, if we're looking for consensus, I definitely would add, I think we've asked for several years for an update on IDEA. I think we heard the co-chair of VAG say they've asked for an update. I, I think, well, I'll speak for myself, I'm very supportive. I'm not just identifying children for a gifted program. I'm very supportive. I want to make sure whatever funds we have, we've thought about, are we allocating them the best ways? If we need more, I'm, I'm even for considering more for this program if I understood it. But we've been asking and looking kind of at this ninth grade program because it's so siloed. And we've been asking for an IDEA program update for a number of years. So it's been a crazy year this year, but I am, I am hesitant to put this to a full credit when last week we were talking about cutting it. And really the answer is maybe we need to learn more about it because Dr. Radley and Mrs. Dunn are saying great things are happening in it. So we seem a little lost in space on it and it's, it's not a willingness not to support it. It's, it's, we just don't, we need to get our hands around this program. And is this the best way to roll out a gifted program to our students?
That, that being said, and full disclosure for you, I did not withhold any information last week because these were the topic of, of conversations that, that we had this particular, in leading up to this board meeting and in preparation for it. So I would be disingenuous to have pulled it out on my behalf. The other thing I would say is, okay, if we have to do the, the review at, at another time, that's fine. I respect that and certainly we'll follow through with that. I don't think, I'll just be honest, I don't think giving it the credit is going to preclude that, nor is it doubling down on what, what. Well, I just, I just want to say that there are other courses in the, in the high school that are experiencing the same type of thing for independent work. So I just want to just say it's standing alone a little bit. I don't see it as being a, such a, such an advocate to move it forward that, that it, it precludes you doing the evaluation at the same time. But anyway, yes.
I'll just, I just have a clarification on that. I guess my only question is, you know, if we were to raise it to one credit, will we then change it from a pass fail or a cumer? It's not a graded class. So then it, you know, I think it's a bigger discussion than a credit. And I do want to echo my fellow board members, I am fully supportive of the IDEA program. I just want it to be as robust as it can be. I, I just, this ninth grade program has always been something we've wanted to discuss and I'd love to have a robust discussion. But to the extent you think one credit, you know, changing it to a credit isn't going to preclude us from having that discussion, I defer to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Any further questions aboard comments on what Mrs. Dunn is presenting? Thank you.
Can I just be clear then, in terms of, I just reading the board that, that you'd be okay with them going forward with the credit? It's not going to preclude. I just want to be clear. I don't want to be like the principals here tonight.
There's no action item on it. I mean, we can get a consensus of the board supporting it. But I think the board has been clear that this will be a add to the master agenda, which does have an action item on it.
Okay.
So we, these classes will come back next time we need. I will tell you, I, I don't have support for the one credit right now. I want to. I, I don't, it's confusing and maybe this is part of how it needs to be too. But if there are other opportunities for this kind of work in, in other ways and, and children can have independent studies, why have we sectioned it out this way? How is it different? Is it receiving the same course credit or different? Does it get a grade now? Does it, does it affect kids' GPAs? Does it not? Like there's a bigger conversation here. And I actually think the parents who support DAG and much of these gifted parents, while this is a hard conversation, I think they would support it in the end because I think what we're saying is do we need more? Do we need different? How can we really do it rather than just giving it another half a credit? Like I get a mixed message of this is a great program, all kids should have the opportunity. Then the parents say this is their only opportunity to do it. And then we hear, well, there's lots of other opportunities in the high school that do something similar to this. I need someone to tease it out for me. I was hoping tonight would because I want to support it, but I don't know that I'm there yet. So I don't know if more information next week or if anyone has anything to add this week that would help. I really want to.
I, I, I think what I can only add is that I agree that it probably is a programmatic look. It is difficult for me as the high school principal to weigh in on the entire, obviously gifted program. I think, and, and in some ways, it is not a course like other courses are at the high school because it is a culminating piece of that experience in that program. It's a very valued culminating piece. And I think you're, you're right to ask the questions about the eighth grade ending, ninth grade ending. But it, but I think we all agree that it's, it's valued and the work is of the students is at a high level. And so for that reason, I support the, the awarding of credit for, for that work. Again, I, I understand though, the, the need. Again, I, I understand though, the, the need to take a look at, at the entire program and how it progresses to this point. So.
Is it graded now? Would it be pass fail?
It's a pass fail, is pass fail course. Yes.
Remain pass fail.
Yes, yes.
There were no other changes other than moving from a half credit to a full credit. And the, the way that I look at it is these are students that are, while the class does not meet every day, it is meeting for the full year and it requires their time outside of that class. So when you think about how credits are awarded based on the time that students spend in that class, that would be some rationale for the 1.0 or for the, for the full credit. The other piece to look at, I know programmatically there, we can certainly explore more with it. But I also think that when students move to high school, we often think that they have more opportunities to take different courses. And that's true for all students and that's based on looking at high achieving students versus gifted and talented learners. So that's the, the difference there. And this program is specifically designed for identified gifted and talented students with their, their like, like, like their peers, with their like-minded peers and taking a more rigorous course load is for high achieving students. So that's the, that's the big difference programmatically. But we can certainly look into it more and talk about it. I haven't had that opportunity with you yet.
Mrs. Stein.
Sorry, I'm just going to harp on this. In terms of, of credit, then this would be their elective. Because I know when it was a point five, there was some scheduling complications you had in terms of, right, is that?
Yeah. So the, this will still take up one, a full period for them for the entire year. So it doesn't change it. So it's really trying to honor the work that they're doing and giving them credit for the time that they're putting into the course.
Mrs. Ritchie.
I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with the increase, but I'm struggling with, with the program without a full overview and look at the IDEA program. And, and the reason is I know it's considered a culminating piece to IDEA, but we have a huge drop off in enrollment when we get to ninth grade. So I know this year we have more students participating than we typically do, but we don't see the majority of those eighth grade IDEA students continuing on with achievers. So I just think that's something to consider as we move along. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. McKenna.
Would you just, when you come back, would you please give us just a brief overview of what the, just broad sketches, what the, what the timing is for a review of the, of the gifted program? Because I assume that this is sort of a very preliminary look as you got here and then there are probably some plans down the road. If we could just understand broadly with this, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Moving on to see follow-up questions and discussions regarding the 2021, 2022 proposed Board of Education budget.
I'm sorry, Mr. Diney. We have some new courses as well.
Okay. Okay.
So I'd like to introduce Keith Keeler, who will present on a new course proposal, African-American, Black and Latinx and Puerto Rican Studies for next year.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Keith Keeler of the Social Studies Department Chairperson. And I want to talk to you about our proposed course. It's a full year elective course. The first semester of which will focus on Black and African-American Studies and the second semester of which will focus on Latin and Puerto Rican Studies. The class is largely an extension of our current history offerings in the department. It adds to what students have already studied in Western Seven World Studies and is going to develop their understanding of the United States, which they're going to study in 11th grade in American History and 12th grade in Law and Government. This additional course, this new proposed course will make our department offerings more inclusive and representative. In our current American History 300 course, we have a survey approach. We're recovering a large span of time and trying to look at history through many, many lenses. Military, political, social, economic, intellectual, covering a lot of ground. While we're doing that, we're also trying to understand what life was like for various social groups in each of America's different periods of time. And this proposed course will be an extension of that. It will allow us to study the experiences of African-Americans as well as Latinos and Puerto Ricans and understand what life was like in different time periods for these groups and also understand what contributions they made to the United States. In each semester, we'll start with understanding where these respective groups came from, then look at their movement into American society, their experiences within the United States and celebrate their contributions while moving from America in its infancy to the modern era. Because of its close connection with American history, history, we're proposing that this class be open to 11th and 12th grade students. And it's a class that is heavily rooted in the inquiry process. That means that we're going to be really focusing on the, the four domains within the inquiry arc. Questioning, skill building within the discipline, sourced analysis and drawing and sharing conclusions. To give you a little bit more background about the origin of this class, the state of Connecticut passed Public Act 1912, which requires every high school to offer a full year course on Black and African-American and Latinx and Puerto Rican Studies. This class is unique in that the curriculum has been developed by the state, by an organization called CERC and that all Connecticut schools will be using that curriculum in the 22, excuse me, 2022, 2023 school year. While that's still two years away, the department has felt like there is a demand within the student population for this course. We absolutely see the value in it and we believe this is going to add to our already strong curricular offerings. And we're excited to propose this course for next school year. One final note of clarification is that while the state of Connecticut requires this course be offered on a full year basis, where students would sign up to take both the first semester, Black and African-American Studies semester and the Latinx Puerto Rican Studies semester. We're asking that next school year in the 21, 22 school year, we offer it as two standalone semester courses as the course is being introduced into our, our already robust course offerings at DHS. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the course at this time.
Thank you very much. We'll open it up to board questions. Mr. Maroney.
So since we're developing this, this class, the way I'm hearing it, I'm curious as to why we wouldn't add in Asian Americans and indigenous people as well or, and/or other groups which I'm omitting.
So this course is actually specifically, the way the, the legislation was written is specifically focused on Black and African-American Studies and Latinx and Puerto Rican Studies. It absolutely would be something that we would look into, I think, in the future, expanding some of our offerings perhaps and looking at how we could be even more inclusive than we are now. That would definitely be something that we could, we could look at. I think it would be challenging. I think it's already going to be a very full curriculum. It would be challenging to add more into it right now. And just to clarify also, this is something that is going to, ultimately the, the state is going to provide to high schools in the state of Connecticut. So we will, won't have the opportunity to develop the course as we might normally develop a course that would come from the department.
Thank you. Mrs. Stein.
Can you just talk a little bit about the timing? Because I know registration for new classes is coming up, I think in, I saw it first week in February it begins. So assuming this goes, we approve it, it would be at our next board meeting. How do you plan to sort of sell this to the students? What is the, to make sure you get the enrollment that you need and that they know this is a course offering?
So the timing will actually work out quite well because the, the following day after next, or the board meeting in two weeks is going to be our actual registration days and course discussion days with students. So already the history department has started talking about electives with students and, and kind of explaining to them what some of their options might be. We would have everything ready to go. So that way, if the, if this course is approved, the following day we'd be able to really share with students what's being offered, what the course will look like and try to really let them know this is something that they might be really interested in. I, I think we'll be able to, I think we'll have good student interest in this. There was a student survey that was conducted fairly recently. And we had, I think it was of this, those who took the survey, over 40% expressed at least some interest in taking this class. So I'm pretty confident that we'll, we'll get student interest and we'll get some students to register for it and be able to run, run it the next school year.
Thank you. Mrs. Ritchie.
Thank you so much for this update. I just wanted to follow up on the, the objectives for the course are laid out by State Education Resource Center. But we would be developing the full curriculum following those objectives. Is that correct? We would develop that curriculum in-house here in Darien.
That's actually not the way the, the course has been proposed at this point. So the, the state has released that, that information. They've also released a scope and sequence for the course already. And it should be, I don't, I don't, it should be coming out soon. The, the, the more developed actual curriculum guide that will be used. I've had an opportunity to attend a number of, a number of information sessions that were run by CERC. They've shared some of what it would look like, given some samples, but they have not released it fully yet. So we, we will certain, you know, we're hopeful that we'll be able to put our, our spin on it. But it is, at this point, it's something that the state is going to be giving to us and we're going to be working with. With that being said, you know, the state is not requiring it until 22, 23. If this course is approved, I would like to, us to become part of that state pilot that they're having next school year. If that's, if we're able to, that would give us an opportunity to give a lot of direct feedback to CERC and hopefully continue to give some shape to it as it continues to be refined for that 22, 23 school year and thereafter.
Mrs. Ritchie.
I just want to follow up. So if, it, it sounds like the curriculum is still in progress. So what will be we doing for next school year for the course?
As we move out through this spring semester, it's going to be released and, and CERC is also going to be running some professional development throughout the spring as well as into the summer. So that we'll be fully prepared to, to teach that course.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments?
Just, just to comment to Mrs. Stein, just moving forward, we have discussions with the principal and, and we will with the curriculum council. We have to separate this process from the budget process. It has to come in October. So we're moving this whole thing no sooner when our department chairs will present something, they're going to have to start working on something for next year because it's, it just would work better to separate the whole thing, approve courses and then make them into the budget, so on and so forth. So that will happen. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. The next course that we're going to introduce is STEM Design and Innovation. And Christian Dockham, our Science Department Chair, will give you an overview of that course.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Christian Dockham. I'm the Science Department Chair for six through 12 here in Darien. I'm here tonight and excited to be here tonight to introduce our STEM Design and Innovation course. This is an interdisciplinary course that is going to combine skills and content from our science and technology and engineering education departments. This course takes an active approach towards the nature of design and the science and engineering practices as outlined in the Next Generation Science Standards. STEM Design and Innovation provides students a unique opportunity to guide their own learning and thinking while focusing on designing a solution to a local issue. Within the structure of this class, students see that finding the right question to ask is far more important than asking for the right answer. Students will gain valuable experience in setting their own goals, monitoring their progress and presenting their ideas to peers, instructors and experts within their field of study. Students will ultimately complete design projects that includes inquiry and analysis of their design opportunity, a conceptual design phase, detailed design and refinement, as well as testing and evaluation of their initial design. While being discussed between departments for the past couple of years, this course is being brought to the board at this point to meet some key student needs at DHS. As you know, students of the class of 2023 are expected to meet a new STEM credit requirement of nine credits. Based on past audits of graduating course, classes, about 70% of our graduating students are meeting this requirement currently. This class will provide an additional opportunity for students to gain STEM and/or science credits. As highlighted in a previous board presentation and will again be referenced later tonight, our science curriculum at DHS is being revised to ensure alignment with those Next Generation Science Standards. The curriculum for this course will be aligned to the science and engineering practices and provide students with experiences that will prepare them for our state NGSS assessment that is administered each spring. Lastly, this course is designed to create an experience for students to fully engage in the inquiry and design process. This course is based on students identifying good questions, developing robust investigations, considering possible solutions and consequences of those solutions, developing evidence-based claims and being able to communicate and act upon what they learn. Above all, throughout the course, students increasingly take ownership of the design process so that they may replicate it in future years. As currently presented, the STEM Design and Innovation is a full year science course. It is crafted, as I said, around the science and engineering practice as well as the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. From the beginning, students will utilize these practices to introduce the engineering design process in the context of these sustainable development goals. These goals provide the direction for both teachers and students to identify the scientific concepts that are necessary to understand the foundations of these development goals. Example goals could include zero hunger, clean water and sanitation, an industry innovation and infrastructure. These goals are broad, multifaceted and applicable to our everyday life. Throughout the course, students will be utilizing a project-based learning structure. They will work on a project over an extended period of time that engages them in solving a real world problem and answer a real world complex question based on their interests and/or passions. In working through the design process, students will demonstrate their knowledge and ability to apply the science and engineering practices in a variety of ways. Students leaving the class will have a deep understanding of the science behind their interests and the skills gained during the design process. It is our hope that students will take this work and develop it further. It is with this in mind that we envision this class as a feeder into our independent projects and engineering course or IPI. This would give students additional opportunities to see their ideas or designs to fruition as well as provide opportunities to meet the mastery-based learning graduation requirements at DHS. I look forward to answering any questions that you may have and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Dockman. We'll open it up. Mrs. Stein.
Um, can you just talk about why you wouldn't start this earlier than 11th grade concerning the ability to run into an independent study? Was there any thought given to starting it in 10th?
So in, in our discussions, we felt 11th grade was an opportunity to start and, and look at, you know, look at students who are coming in with two years of science credit as well as two years of math credit already and use that as a sort of launching point for, for the course. The design of the course would allow students a sort of less traditional path through our science offerings and could provide a less traditional path through our science offerings in the future. But we felt that, that having this opportunity for 11th graders to then move into the 12th grade IPI course was, was the most, the, the best launching point, so to speak.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from the board? Thank you, Mr. Dockman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Christian. And the next two courses, I'll introduce Greg Darren. Thank you. Thank you, Christian. And the next two courses, I'll introduce Greg Darren, our leader in tech education. And he will be talking about an intro to app design in our computer science as well as. An offering in business and accounting.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Greg Darren and I am the six to twelve department coordinator for technology, education, engineering and computer science. I will be brief and I will be more than happy to answer any questions that arise. And I will be talking, as Mrs. Dunn said, about two courses that we will be offering or hope to be offering at the high school. The first one is an accounting course. And that is the first class proposed for our business education that is actually our first sequencing class. Mrs. Gray is our one business education teacher at the high school. And her classes are very popular and really jam-packed. So she's been thinking about this course for quite some time. And it's going to give students the opportunity to kind of dive a little bit deeper into business, business education. It also helps support our DECA club, which is also a very popular club. And kids have, for years have been trying to compete in the accounting events at DECA. But they are lacking the skills needed to compete in that event and this course will fulfill that. This also bridges some of these skills in our math courses. To this department as well and some real-world applications as the students in this course. Will learn accounting, especially for big businesses. They'll be able to analyze some of the data for companies such as Apple or Coca-Cola. And be able to work some of those numbers and some of the books for that class. There are other towns in our Derg that are also offering this, including Weston, Wilton and Westport or in our, our area. And it's a semester-long course. The app design course is also a semester-long course. And this helps fulfill a gap in our computer science curriculum. We offer a number of computer science courses, learning languages such as Python and Java. And we also offer a web design one and a web design two course. However, you probably have realized this, not only do businesses re, require websites these days. More and more companies are really requiring apps. It's a multi-billion dollar industry and they're becoming almost more important than a website. Because everybody has a mobile phone with them wherever they go. So when you're looking at a store and I do it all the time at the Home Depot, I bring up the Home Depot app. And I'm able to scan prices and get everything I need right away. And I, I rarely utilize the website. So it's, it's a really big industry. And it's something that we're lacking in our department and I hope to provide this opportunity for students. And both of these courses will help to fulfill the nine STEM requirements that are required, will be required for graduation in the state of Connecticut. Forthcoming. And if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to address them.
Thank you, Mr. Darren. Both very exciting. All these courses are very exciting. Thank you. Mrs. Ritchie.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Darren. It's, it's exciting to see us evolve our curriculum as the times evolve. My question is, as I was reviewing the materials, I didn't see anything in there about additional staff requirements, but we do have. An addition of point six FTE. And I just wanted to confirm that it is related to these new and increased, these new courses and increased desire and demand for these classes.
Correct. That point, that point six addition in the computer science courses. This app design course will help fulfill some of that as well, in addition to some of the over-rolls that we have in those courses.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein.
I'm just focusing on the app development class. Can you confirm that the school issued iPads are capable of doing whatever programming or design you need? And I also noticed there aren't any materials, whether it's programs or your own apps to do it. Is there anything else you need for this? Course that you don't already have?
At the moment, there is not anything else we need. These will fully run on the iPads that are issued at the high school. It utilizes Swift app and Swift programming, which is compatible with the school iPads. And we're rolling out this course using Apple's curriculum, which is available to us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Akman.
So I just wanted to say that I think all, all these new courses we're hearing about are nice because they're, they're. I think they're very responsive to the kids' world, right? They're, they're a fresh look on things, whether it be. History, a new way of looking at things or, or STEM and science. Mr. Darren, you're right. Those business ed and what Mrs. Gray has done with that department has been amazing and giving some real-world accounting for kids, I think. Is really exciting. Her classes are packed for a reason. So I just. As much as we, you know, we're pushing on some other courses and it's really because we want to see full, robust. Experiences for our student. And I think these new courses you have brought forward really will do that through all the departments. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other further questions? Thank you, Mr. Darren.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
All right, moving along. Steve, follow-up questions and discussions regarding the twenty-two, twenty-two proposed Board of Education budget. Including update on STEM curriculum and team taught classes.
So with the boards and dozens, perhaps we could just go to the update on the STEM and the team taught and we'll get there of some of our staff members off this evening. So with that, I can turn, just re-introduce people or you want to jump me to? Do that for you.
I can do that. Sorry, I'm just pulling up the presentation. So good evening again, everyone. Tonight, joining me for this presentation is Dr. McGeadigan, our Director of Instructional Technology. Lynda Johnson, our Elementary Program Director for Math and Science. Greg Darren, who is our six-twelve tech ed coordinator, who you just heard from, as well as Mr. Dockham, our six-twelve Science Department Chair. This is a great place in the evening for us to go because it connects well to the course proposals. Mrs. Akman, you took the words out of my mouth a bit with. These courses are about opportunities for students and what I'm really proud of is they're true to the spirit of STEM. Because I think you know the acronym by now. It's Science, Technology, Engineering and Mathematics. But we often think about those as separate content areas, but the entire purpose of STEM is about the interdisciplinary fusion of all of those disciplines. So we have a brief presentation for you tonight and it's more of an update than a presentation. We'll just look at a broad overview, some current opportunities our students have. And then a look ahead, which should be brief because you just heard a chunk of the look ahead. So I will turn it over to Dr. McGeadigan.
Good evening. We would like to thank the board for this opportunity to update our community about our STEM program. As you know, STEM is an approach to learning and development that integrates the areas of science, technology, engineering and mathematics. Through STEM, students develop key skills, including problem-solving, critical thinking, accessing and analyzing information. The more integrated the learning, the greater the connections across disciplines, which foster deeper learning. Within this connective tissue, we are committed to increasing STEM literacy for all students. And to nurture active lifelong learners, preparing them to be responsible global citizens who can identify. And use the connection shared by these disciplines to help shape their lives and their community. I'd like to provide a quick overview of our STEM learning opportunities across the district. We have science and math learning in our elementary classrooms. As well as various STEM-aligned lessons and experiences with our librarians. Additionally, with the exception of this year, we have STEM experiential learning experiences through our outreach program with Darien High School students. At the middle school, we offer science and math, of course, as well as engineering and computer science through our project lead-the-way classes. As well as specific technology learning through our Global Innovators course. Which ties into the Sustainable Development Goals that Mr. Darren was mentioning. Our courses use the NGSS and related ISTI standards. These are woven throughout the curriculum. Helping to develop a cohesive vocabulary throughout these learning experiences. And at the high school, of course, we offer a variety of science, math, technology, engineering, computer science and business classes. Which well prepare students for college or other career choices. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Dockham.
Hello, I'm, I'm back. So as I just mentioned in our course proposal for the STEM Design and Innovation course. A common thread throughout our three levels highlighted in the past slide is the Next Generation Science Standards, or NGSS for short. This framework is part of our current science curriculum in the elementary and middle school, as well as some of the core science classes at DHS. Before moving on, we wanted to give you a quick review of the role that the Next Generation Science Standards play within our curriculum. Based on the presentation we made in February of two thousand and nineteen. The NGSS framework is based on three components of science learning, all of which are critical in linking practice to content. The NGSS focuses on developing the habits in, of mind and skills that scientists and engineers use in day-to-day life. The foundations of the NGSS are the three dimensions that are intertwined in each performance expectation or standard. These dimensions are the science and engineering practices, the disciplinary core ideas and the cross-cutting concepts. Briefly, the science and engineering practices describe the behaviors that scientists engage in as they investigate, build models and theories about the natural world. And the key set of engineering practices that engineers use as the design and create solutions to real-world issues. The disciplinary core ideas are key science content that will be used to focus our K-12 science curriculum, instruction and assessments. To be considered core content, the idea must have broad importance across multiple sciences. Or engineering disciplines, or be a key organizing concept in a single discipline. They must provide a foundation for understanding more complex content ideas. Be relevant to the student or society and be teachable over multiple grades and at increasing levels of depth and sophistication. In addition to the disciplinary core ideas in the life, physical and earth and space scientists, sciences. The NGSS includes specific disciplinary core ideas that focus on the engineering design process. Both within and across disciplines. These engineering disciplinary core ideas provide the necessary structure for both teachers and students to see the connections between the science and engineering content. Lastly, the seven cross-cutting concepts have applications across all content areas of science and engineering. As such, one can think of these concepts as a way of linking the different domains of science. The NGSS emphasizes the need for these concepts to be made explicit for students. Because they provide the foundation for connecting knowledge from various science and engineering fields. Into a coherent and scientific fact-based view of the world. The engineering design process is inherently built into the next generation performance. The Next Generation Science Standards Performance Expectations. As foundational engineering disciplinary core ideas and practices. Components of the design process are found in each grade band. Within the district and provide students with opportunities to build more complex understanding of the design process. In the context of the NGSS, a student leaving Darien at the end of twelfth grade should be able to. Highlight the following design experiences. First, be able to define and delimit engineering problems. This involves stating a problem to be solved as clearly as possible and identifying terms or criteria for success. And constraints and limitations. Designing solutions to engineering problems. This begins with generating a number of possible solutions, then evaluating, evaluating potential solutions to see which one best meets those criteria and constraints. And then lastly, optimizing the design solution. This involves a process in which solutions are systematically tested and refined. And a final design is improved by trading off less important features for more, those that are more important. To solve that import, that particular problem. It is important to point out that these component ideas do not always follow in order. And more than do, any more than do the steps of the scientific inquiry process. At any stage, a problem solver can redefine a problem or generate new solutions to replace an idea. That isn't working out or does not meet the criteria. These aspects of the engineering design process can be identified throughout the science curriculum. And at this point, I'd like to pass the mic to my colleague Lynda Johnson, who will highlight some of these examples in our elementary science curriculum.
Thank you, Christian. Good evening, Mr. Dean, Dr. Adley and members of the board. The engineering and design performance expectation at the elementary level will organize in grade level bands. In the garden through second grade and third, third. At each grade level, students work with a phenomenon that is aligned to the three dimensions that Mr. Dockham just described. And what you see.
Mrs. Johnson, can you, I think you might have to get a little closer to the mic. You're cutting in and out a little bit.
Okay, my apologies.
No, thank you. We just want to make sure we hear all this good stuff.
Is that better?
That's better. Thank you.
So what you see, so what you see here is an example from our second and fifth grade curriculum. In second grade, students learn about different physical properties of matter. And their importance when selecting materials to build something. In one of our STEM lessons, second graders design a roof to a doghouse to protect the dog from different weather element. In fifth grade, students learn about how community members use science and engineering practices. To protect the earth's environment. Given very specific constraints, our fifth graders are tasked with keeping up with oil skill. At all grade levels, math skills are integrated when needed to solve real-world problems. Additionally, our primary resource, Math Focus, provides enrichment STEM activity. As Dr. McGeadigan mentioned, in a typical school year, we also have our DHS STEM outreach program. Which involves students from our high school, working with students in our elementary schools. High school students provide experiences, experiences designing, making and testing prototypes. To solve real-world, real-world problems. And they lead our elementary age students through this engineering and design process. Last year, we expanded our outreach program from two grade levels to four grade levels. So now it is at every elementary school in grades two through five. Our library, our library media specialists also collaborate with our classroom teachers. To provide other STEM experiences that are aligned to our science curriculum. For example, in third grade, students learn about different bridge designs and use their knowledge of forces. To engineer bridges made from paper. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dockham to share experiences at the secondary level.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. I, as Lynda described, the NGSS process provides students with a variety of phenomena. And, and each of those grade levels have engineering design. Parts within the, within their curriculum. So this slide gives some examples that, that we have in both the middle and high school level. And if we look at the guiding questions for these levels, we can really highlight the design process aspects. And characteristics of the design process that I highlighted a, a number of slides ago. In sixth grade, one of our units is focused on energy transfer and as part of that unit, our students are. And as part of that unit, our students are asked how to design a cup system to slow energy transfer into the liquid that's found inside that. So in many of these examples, you'll see that the entire design process may not be identified. So example here is designing a solution. So they're taking their understanding of energy transfer in different materials and designing a system in which energy transfer would slow. So we use that every day. We look at our coffee mugs or, you know, any of the thermoses that we use during the winter. In our seventh-grade Global Innovations class, another example, considering one who has cerebral palsy, what design attributes should a therapeutic toy have? Here, they're taking a previously created design and looking at improving it. So they're optimizing that design solution. So as I stated, you oftentimes will see these design process characteristics in individual or in pairs within a guiding question. At the high school, at grade nine in our biology class, one of our guiding questions, how does planting trees compare to other solutions for climate change? So again, this would be optimizing a number of solutions and looking at how those solutions are put up against the criteria for solving climate change issues. And then lastly, in one of our engineering classes, how can we utilize various forms of energy to move goods and people more efficiently? So again, making some justifications on solutions and looking at how those solutions can be optimized to improve the movement of goods and services to people.
Thank you, Christian. And I'll talk again about the new STEM courses. If you thought I was a brief before, you could just see me now. So the new STEM courses that I've already spoke about, so I'm not going to rehash all of these. Our accounting course, something we're really excited about, just to get some more depth into our business department. And our app development will definitely fulfill a gap, a needed gap, in our computer science course. And again, that STEM Design and Innovation Course that Christian so eloquently presented for us really ties in both of our departments, from the STEM and the Technology Education Department.
Mrs. Megadigan, I think you're on mute.
Thank you. To bring it all together, we'd like to give you a little glimpse into the future. So looking toward the future, we envision a STEM Innovation Center, which would serve as a collaborative space where students and teachers alike will investigate new ways to engage in critical thinking, collaborate around interdisciplinary projects, prototype solutions to real-world problems, and share their learning with others. It is the intent to promote rigor through investigative and intensive research, to learn how to ask the right questions, to harken back to Mr. Dacko's statement, to become problem finders, and to work within this hot house of project-based learning to create solutions to real-world problems. We can see our students working in this type of innovation hub or incubator environment, employing the methods of agile startups with the goal of creating novel ideas that can either disrupt or complement potential solutions. In this nurturing environment, we will tap into community experts to develop a mentored collaborative environment, which will encourage students to think outside the box, to explore possibilities, and to develop an innovator's mindset. Students and teachers will co-construct learning as students prepare for success in career, college, and life. We look forward to continuing to bring this STEM program vision to life, and thank you.
No, I just thank people for their presentation and open the floor. Great. Thank you all for that great presentation. All very exciting information for our students. So thank you for all the work put into that presentation. I will open it up for board questions. Mrs. Stein.
I just want to commend you guys. I think this is excellent. Having had a child who is now in engineering, I wish all of this was there for her back then, but this is so inspiring for all the students to come. So thank you.
I'd like to figure out how to sign up myself for some of these courses. So yes, I echo Mrs. Stein. Thank you and the thoughtfulness in the presentation. Mrs. Akman.
I was just going to say thank you, especially with the new state standards for these students. You're giving them more choices and ways to explore STEM. And I think that's really important to keep their interest. We have, you know, wide variety of interest in learning. So I think we really appreciate that it's not two courses everyone has to take. They can all explore and kind of grow their love of this subject very much. So thanks.
Thank you. I think I'll just add that, you know, as we talk about the challenging times we're in, we have to continuously innovate and invest. And I think Darien has a tradition of doing that. And I think while we're in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of a budget cycle, hearing this shows our continued commitment to investing in our students and investing in the education. So thank you very much. It's exciting stuff to hear with all the other challenging stuff that we have. Life will continue to move forward for these students, and this gives them some great opportunities. So thank you. Mr. Maroni.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. One question and a couple of comments. I must say, I love the word "problem creators." I think that's very unique and really struck a nerve with me. But I just would like a little more clarity on your community partnerships that you envision in with the STEM in the future, and can you just elaborate on that a little bit, please?
Sure. I'm happy to answer that, but anyone else can jump in along with me. So for example, there's really exciting opportunities that are out there in engineering, in robotics. We're thinking particularly in Stanford, which has become this mecca of biotech startups. It's geographically spaced, you know, between New York, the Finance Center, and Yale New Haven Hospital. And so multiple startups have been created around robotics, prosthetics, artificial intelligence. It's a really exciting time to be in Stanford, so we're hoping we can tap into that kind of vein, for example. We have any number of amazing parents in this community and alums who are tapped into technology in so many different ways that have already helped us in a 3D printing project that Mr. Reynolds did this past year. So we are hoping to form these kinds of collaborative mentorships with our students. And we look forward to developments such as a startup studio that our business students could go into, but that would draw upon students from all different curricular areas. So it's really different degrees of these partnerships, from mentoring to providing other kinds of assistance as well.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments around this?
Just mentioning to Mr. Maroni, in regard to that, another example, the Darien Foundation, another board meeting, bringing forward a gift to try and assist with a robotics program, K-12. And then there is commitment to mentoring and getting the community involved.
Thank you. Thank you all again.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you very much, Dr. Megadigan.
My pleasure.
And Mrs. Dunne, have you disappeared on us or?
I'm still here, listening. Well, you know I'm a little biased to STEM, so I appreciate all the hard work that the whole group has done at the high school. It's very exciting. Are you ready for the next presentation?
We are on team teaching. Thank you, and thank you for your work this week and a lot of the presentations you have. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sharing my screen. Can you see it?
Yes, you can.
Okay, great. So I'm happy to be here to follow up on the discussions on supports at the high school. And we talked the last time about the history of the lab model and team-taught models were introduced after pilots the previous year in the 2016-17 school year. As we said earlier, at the time, 200-level classes at DHS had been eliminated. And for those who don't know, the 200-level classes were capped at 15 to 16 students and delivered a modified curriculum for our students who needed a slower pace and for whom a smaller student-to-teacher ratio was required. Although very supportive in nature, 200-level classes, we found were isolating for our students and especially for those who might have had needs in several areas. And as a result, they were grouped throughout the day and remained with a small cohort of students throughout their experience each year. We believed at the time, and we still do, that our students are able to access a rigorous curriculum, and we wanted that for those students as well with the appropriate supports in place. And so the response was to eliminate 200-level courses, but make sure that we shored up the supports for those students who we would be moving into a more challenging 300-level curriculum. The goal for creating the supports at the time was to provide the support programmatically while maintaining our academic rigor, the integrity of our curriculum, and also maintaining high expectations for every student at DHS. So a variety of sports exist today at Darien High School, and some of those supports are for our students in special education. They are learning centers, comprehensive courses, co-taught English and math. And these are for students who are receiving specialized instruction according to the goals in their IEP designed for each individual student. In general education, there are several levels of support. The lab model, the team model, work in our Academic Success Center, which was formerly the Homework Center at DHS, and our Reading and Study Skills Course. Those are all structured supports for general ed students and students in special education as well. So how does one get the support that they need at DHS? And most of that work begins at the Student Intervention Team. This team meets once a week to review academic progress for our students who have been struggling. And the team includes the members of the list here, our counselors, a school psychologist, and assistant principal, the teacher of the Academic Success Center in Reading and Study Skills, and most often, a student and parent. The recommendations come out of this SIT meeting, and students are placed in supports based on need. So for your background, at the time that we prepared the slides, 38 students had been referred to the SIT this semester so far. 34 students had been assigned to some level of support in the Academic Success Center and/or Reading and Study Skills. And other supports would be considered at that time or added as well in the lab support class, the team taught, course changes, course level changes, also referral to the 504 team in some situations, or referral to PPT as well. So take a look at now the team model and the lab model. The lab model meets for three to four times in a cycle. The class and lab are taught by the same classroom teacher typically, although there are certainly exceptions. We always err on the side of offering support to a student and will include a student in a lab if the need is there. The lab is linked with the class curriculum, and the focus in the lab is on pre- and post-teaching. Who would be recommended for lab support? Here, we would be recommending primarily students for whom the pacing of the classroom instruction is most challenging. And here's where the pre- and post-teaching come into play. For students for whom pacing is challenging, having an opportunity to preview content before it's presented in class is extremely helpful. And also, to review material that has been shared already, building a foundation for further learning. So when we compare the team-taught model to the lab support, here we have a class taught by two general education teachers, content area specialists. Advantages here are reduced student-to-teacher ratio. Important to note that there is no accompanying lab with this. This intervention takes place in the classroom. So who would we recommend for a team-taught class? This is a obviously less intense intervention for students. And this would be a course and a recommendation for those students who require greater attention from the teacher during the class period. And the lower student-to-teacher ratio is important to increasing that contact time. So since the first year of implementation, we have learned some things that are important, I think, to share as part of this decision-making process. But one thing that's extremely important is that we have seen less support necessary for students as they progress through the high schools to grade 12. Certainly, this is exactly what we would have wanted to see four years ago. And it's appropriate that we are shoring up our students early on in their high school careers and that we are striving for greater independence for our students as those years go forward. Requests for team teaching have gone down, and as a result, there are more sections of lab being offered at the high school. Just as we do with course selection process, we throw the schedule out from one year to the next and rebuild from the beginning. And so the requests that come in drive the supports and sections that we create. And so those numbers of team teaching sessions have gone down. They remain currently in grades nine and 10, while lab supports are offered in grades nine through 12. In general, our teachers prefer the lab model. They find it to be a more personal, more direct intervention, and that the pre- and post-teaching really does offer tremendous growth for our students. So highlighting strengths and weaknesses then between courses, between in team teaching, excuse me. The strengths are obviously a dynamic learning environment in which two content area specialists interact. There are opportunities for discourse and modeling that occur between the two teachers, instructional design opportunities that are available when two educators are present. And the reduction of student-to-teacher ratio is certainly an advantage in the class period as well. Again, teachers feel that it's a less targeted intervention. The pre- and post-teaching, which is a hallmark of the lab course, is not an opportunity here. And although there are two teachers present, it does not provide, often for small group instruction, which the lab model does provide. So for example, we'll look at social studies. We see core- We see courses in the lab model in all of our major areas. And the team taught in ninth grade and tenth grade Western Civ and World Studies. So I'm providing for you here some of the numbers for the courses so that you could see some comparisons between. Labs and team taught in a variety of areas. Here you see eight year long sections of lab in social studies. Serving forty three students, the average of the population in those labs is about five and a half students. When we compare this. To our team taught sections in Western Civ and World Studies, four sections there. Serving the needs of eighteen students who were recommended for the course. Of course, there are other students benefiting benefiting from the team taught environment. There are more than eighteen students in those classes, of course, so when we place students who get supports. Other students are also added to the class through the scheduling process. Here you can see if we were to convert. The supports for these eighteen students to labs. A requirement of point four FTE would be necessary. So for comparison, they've given a little bit of information here on the team taught. Also two sections in English nine and English ten, point eight FTE for. The additional teacher in those classrooms and again twenty five students here being supported in those classes, we could. Create labs to serve the needs of those students as well. Just as a basis of comparison for you, eight labs being taught currently in a variety of courses in math. At the school serving forty three students and lab courses sections in English as well. So our recommendations based on where we stand at the moment. Is to close these remaining four sections of team teaching and in English and history. Replacing the supports with lab supports. This is a preferred model for our teachers as a support for our learners. And it will require a corresponding increase in the number of labs that we offer at the school. That increase in numbers of sections will also. Create flexibility in our scheduling and make the choices. Better for our students in terms of which period they will. Be able to receive support in a lab model. And so the reallocation of the. FTE from the conversion of team teaching to. The lab model would be reallocated across disciplines along with the increase that we requested. Of one point O at the high school and this would result in maintaining the class sizes, not only in history. And English, but across the disciplines at DHS, which we all value, our teachers value, and I know the board of ed values as well. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Appreciate that. We will open up the board questions, Mrs. Stein.
Thank you, Alan. Can you clarify for me, I'm not understanding. The FTE impact, so what we have currently in the budget. Was a reduction of one point six for team with. Additions that netted out to a one FTE, you're saying reallocate one FTE. That's the.
Yes, I, yeah, I can see why that's a little confused.
I needed a little bit. That's not my responsibility.
This is like FTE school, I'm sorry, so the. If you notice in English, we had requested, we were, we were seeing a point eight. Decrease as a result of the closing of the team taught essentially. But a point six increase corresponding to increasing enrollment. And the need for making sure that we have some additional labs available as well, so there is only a net. Negative two point two in English. There's a negative point eight in history. As a result of the closing of those sections. And that gives you the one point O from the net of one point O from from team teaching. Obviously, that history is the one place where we're seeing a reduction of point eight and and. That is representing a reduction in our teaching staff and that is a difficult. Piece of this reallocation. And and part of the concerns that the department, I think, shared with you on the first day.
So are you saying reinstate that?
I'm not saying reinstate that at this point, there is FTE in our history department. That is, we have an average class size of seventeen and we have the capacity to increase. The numbers of students in the sections as well as open additional labs to accommodate these students. And so that point eight is really not a necessity in order to do that.
Okay, I would just ask as a follow up, Western Civ is historically known as one of the most challenging classes entering the high school for any student. So I guess my question to you would be, do you feel confident you have the staff, if you get rid of the team? To support students in lab for Western Civ in particular, you can see in your own graphics that has the most enrollment. Adequately.
I believe we do and and I hope that you know that I would always. Go to Dr. Adley if, you know, again, this is a budget process, we're. We're predicting a lot of things and estimating what we expect. I would always go back, I would never be quiet if I needed more support for our students. So I believe that the FTE we have available with the average class size of seventeen, there is room. For that increase. The, you know, I should add, I guess, that the department, as you know, felt. That that. The, the. Capacity was available because of decisions to move to the five five this year and so. You know, there was concern from from the teachers about whether or not. This, this is a reduction in programming. Or a reduction that could not, you know, could have been seen by addition only, as I believe they thought the commitment was and. You know, it to me, we are not reducing the number of sections being taught in the social studies department. In this point eight. Reduction, we are removing a second teacher from. Four of classes, so. We have the FTE available in the department and I believe we can do it without re employing that point at EFC at this point.
Thank you, Mrs. McCannan.
Thank you for the presentation, it was helpful to see this in a with a within a larger context, I appreciate it. One of the specific concerns we heard was that lab classes can be harder for. Individual students to schedule, particularly if they require more than one. What happens if you have a student that requires more than one lab class in order to succeed in educational environment?
There are situations where students have multiple needs and many of those students. May be. Looking for supports in multiple areas. A small percentage of students might need a support in in three or four or five areas. And most of those students who require that much support are our students in special education. Students with IEPs and. I believe that although I understand the comment, I believe that with. Learning centers, co-taught. Classes being available in mathematics, co-taught classes being available in English. And as we said, we would leave team teaching sections present in science. That that one lab in social studies would allow a student who even needed. Schedule support in almost all the disciplines to be able to do that.
Mrs. Ritchie.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Dunn, for this really great presentation, I clearly needed it because I was a little confused on the history. But I wanted to go back to Mrs. Stein's comment because I am also concerned about history and specifically Western Civ. Because it is such a rigorous course and because we're dealing with COVID and so much uncertainty. I'm sorry, excuse me, I just, as our students hopefully go back to school at some point completely in person. I just want to be sure that during this past year. Well, I don't want to say they lost, but there there's something missing in their education, I want to make sure that whatever they need is there for them. So I think I just want to. State my concern and especially based with the Western Civ because of the rigor of that course. I want to make sure that the resources are there for our children.
Mrs. Ackman.
So I have a couple of thoughts, Mrs. Dunn, and I will try to organize them, but feel free to reorganize me after I ask them. One, I have a question about if we say that that. And I do believe that I understand that there could be a preference for lab. It's more individualized work, whether, you know, special education, general education, it's a great model. But my concern is it does take up another period and there are kids who may shy away from it because that then precludes them from taking. Another great STEM course like we just heard and and team taught gives them some support, so. That's one point if you could talk to. Two, it was interesting in your presentation and thank you, it was very thorough. That we we talk, we're really seeing the need at ninth and tenth, and I think that begs the question. Is part of that just the transition to high school, we have a very rigorous high school. Do those kids kind of need that support, not really a pulled out lab, but they still need a little bit, it's it's a big change. I know we've been working on that transition from middle school to high school, but that's still there. And so my kind of knowledge and background on always hearing about team is team kind of helped those kids as they were going through the transition. There was another set of eyes on them. Two adults in one class, so if we're seeing that's where teams really being most successful. I I am a little concerned of taking it away. And then I guess, you know, from a budgetary standpoint, and this might be to Dr. Adley and Mr. Tramburg as well. Do we really want to put lab in as as the support if now we're saying, well, this is kind of the generalized support, that is a very. Intensive, expensive model of support that's very, very useful and well received at the high school, but team. Can be responsive and requires less FTE and can do work with kids in bigger groups that that need that, so. Those are all my thoughts swirling around this, feel free to organize, answer the bits, answer the. But that's that's kind of, as we've been hearing with, that's what's been swirling in my brain.
I I totally understand that and and, you know, I I guess I have to say that I was. The person here proposing these supports, so it would be. Ironic for me to say the team teaching is not, you know, effective, I wouldn't be saying we're keeping it in. Science if it were not impactful and. I also hear what. We're saying about the impact of COVID, that's an unknown as we transition into next year. And the, you know, the question about students choosing lab. For sure, I mean, one of the things that I think is most amazing about the lab model. Is that I have never, nor I think have the assistant principals have had to intervene. On attendance when it comes to the lab model, students don't earn credit for the lab model, they don't get a grade for the lab model and yet. They are there and they are. Receiving and seeing the great value of the support, which I think has always been an impressive. Anecdote from this experience in grades nine through twelve, so, but I do understand what you're saying that. Students do have to give up another period in order to avail themselves of that support, so that is. You know, one of the reasons that we ended up with both. Four years ago, because we knew that these were two models that would complement one another. So I guess that's my my answer to that is that, you know, I see value in the team teaching. I I feel like, you know, in this, that I can support through the lab and I feel that the. But there. Having more support for sure in grades nine and ten.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
I just want to say thank you, Principal Dunn, I really appreciate this presentation, the level of detail is very helpful, thank you so much.
Thanks, Mrs. Stein.
Hi, Alan, sorry, Katie, and can you just clarify, I still don't have a. Great understanding of how students. Particularly general education students are placed in a team taught class, so can you just talk about that?
It really can happen a number of ways, but most significantly, it's either, you know, something may be. A student may right now be referred to SIT, the student intervention team. And they would be looking for the appropriate level of support for that student. And they would, since we're in midyear, those courses are already set up, but they would look. Perhaps to the team taught sections that are already present and if the need is great enough, we would. Move a student's schedule around in order to place them midstream into that team taught class. Also, right now, when the teachers in the next two weeks. Are making course recommendations for next year. We have a. Spreadsheet that really includes the names of all students at the high school, including the incoming ninth graders. And we will be making recommendations through departments, through general ed teachers, our case managers will be making recommendations. All that data is collected and included as part of the schedule building process and. Really, at the end of that process, there are. You know, hand done schedules that are really looking to see if we've met those expectations. Of course, the PPT process is important in identifying the supports for our special education students. And our general ed students will be offered supports, these recommendations from their teachers, not all students accept those report, sorry, supports. As you said before, not every student will accept a lab necessarily, but. Those recommendations are shared with the family and the student.
Mr. Maroni.
Yeah, so thank you again as well, my question on here is a couple of questions, I. I think my big one is you have a strength and weakness slide on team teaching, but you don't have one on. Labs, so am I to assume that the strengths of the labs are the weaknesses of the team and vice versa?
Not necessarily, I, you know, I think the lab has many strengths. And and not the least of which is extra time with the classroom teacher, building those relationships, one of the things that. We hear from our students and families about lab is that confidence gets built. Students are asking questions in class that they might not have. Asked or offering. Points and discussion because they feel a level of confidence from that pre teaching that went on, so. Those are the are the wonderful aspects of of the lab. I think students also share that once they start building this relationship of support with one teacher, they feel less. Intimidated or worried about reaching out to another teacher and this is something that they learn to. Do with across the board, it's something that they replicate in other settings. One of the things that our college students shared with our under our our high school students this week through the video is how important it is to be able to go and seek. Assistance, that that's that's normal thing to be able to do, when you're in a challenging environment, you need the support of your teachers and. And you need to do that in college as well, so it's good learning for everyone, so. You know, both of these models have worked very well and I think served us well and and our students.
Mr. Maroni.
Just as a thought, could you could you articulate more the weaknesses of the lab as you foresee them?
I think the the weakness is probably what Mrs. Ackman pointed out more that it requires a commitment outside of the regular class period where students are going to meet with their teacher three times. And for some students who might need a little less support, being in a team taught section, the the support is present in the classroom. So it doesn't require an additional commitment outside of the class. There could be an argument that that commitment would be something we'd be looking for on the part of the student. But I I think that scheduling piece is probably the only downside.
Mrs. Ackman.
So to be clear, Mr. Maroni, on my strengths and weaknesses and Mrs. Dunn, thank you, because I think you said it correctly for me. I think what I'm struggling with, I think lab is a great support. Weaknesses, more strengths and weaknesses for many kids. What I'm struggling with is I think team is also a great sport for a different subset of kids, and there might be a cohort there that will go in between. But I think I I'm looking at it as those kids that are a little more distinct and benefit from both. So I'm having a hard time taking away one or the, I wouldn't trade one or the other. I'm not sure yet. I I think there are kids who who really benefit. And it's it's a benefit to our high school and our district, quite frankly, that we've we've found so many ways to do it. So I I wasn't saying, I'm I'm sure that I don't think one's a trade off for the.
And I'm not asking trade off. My my question is kind of along that, my question and I is is Katie asked the question about the team teaching, what happens in the in the midst of the year? What happens in the midst of the year if you have to go into a lab and you have a fairly full schedule? How does that work in your scheduling? Does that mean you have to drop a class or? Because that's the only way I see it work.
You may have to, and if that's a priority and and a move, it doesn't mean you necessarily drop a class, but you may have to change another class section to a different teacher, perhaps a different period. We try always to obviously minimize the impact of that and do that at points where quarter and semester endings occur, but there are sometimes changes that have to take place that, but one would has to make the adjustment based on the need in that particular moment for that student.
So I would like to thank Alan for all of the preparation and for doing a great job with us. And the sum of the greats is that we're a bit of a rock and a hard place. Okay? So I want to recognize that, and that's not an easy place to be. But I will say this, in terms of what you said, the there there is space within the regular scheduling for the social studies department to assume other FTEs in there, which, as you heard from from Ellen, they would much prefer them to go towards labs, teachers in general, than they would to team teaching as the effective model. And the staff and then the FTEs are available there to do that. So it's just a level of, how low do you go in class sizes? How, and I commend this district tremendously for its commitment to our young people in terms and to our staff in terms of the size of the classes. That's a bit of a judgment, admittedly. As a judgment, in this case, we feel we can make without a tremendous sacrifice.
Mrs. Ackman.
Sorry, that. So what about teacher to teacher in team class? I mean, we talk a lot about professional development and teacher mentoring. But in the team taught classes, I would assume that teachers have the ability to learn and adjust in learning styles in in the best. I mean, I imagine it could go poorly if two teachers don't get along. But in the best of circumstances, I I have we asked staff, do they believe that in some ways it's it's another version of professional development, working with a peer and learning?
Yeah, I can answer that clearly that yes, it is, has been a tremendous benefit professionally for the partnerships, especially those that have been able to be sustained. And and I, whether or not we go forward with team teaching in in history, that work has been done and has benefited our our staff. So it's one of the benefits of the decision to do it to begin with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Any further questions or comments?
I just, I'm really struggling with, I mean, this is, thank you, Mrs. Dunn, for this, for all the information. It was great. But I'm just struggling with. When I heard you say that you see value in the team teaching, it's both, it both work well. It's captured a group of students that need additional support. I'm just really struggling taking it away now when we are not sure what's going to happen and how many how many eighth graders going into ninth grade next year are really going to need that extra, that extra boost. And I'm, I I just go further out there. I'm really concerned about taking any student centered support away from children right now.
So is there a why now?
Mrs. Ackman.
Is there a why now?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. Is there a why? Why are we doing this now?
I think I'm so long after. Yeah, yes, there is why now. I'm charged with putting all the puzzle together of a budget and to be reasonable and what, whatever you say, you would go crazy if I brought in a five, six. You may not, you may not say you would, but you would, right? So I'm trying, right, but I'm trying to be. Right, okay, but but.
That's not fair.
But I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be reasonable about it, right? This was an efficient that I think we can make. I wouldn't do it if we didn't think we could make it. It's not, Alan didn't come to the table with, this is, this, this is, I come to you with this reduction, because I think I can do it right up front without even asking. That didn't happen, right? She was asked to make a reduction. Could you make a reduction somewhere? I joined her in that discussion. We had a discussion here at Central Service about it, so I don't want to be flippant about it because it's a serious intervention for kids, so that I certainly don't want to be doing that. But but it's it's part of, it's part of making making a presentation that I think will be well received or be received and supported by the community. So that's that's what I'm trying to do.
I appreciate that. I think all good questions. I do. I do struggle with the the kind of why now and what what is needed up there and what we know we don't know going into the next year. So while I appreciate trying to put the pieces of the puzzle together, and I don't ever want part of this conversation to be about a percentage as to where our budget is, because it's about what these students need. And I and I just, I, you know, my concern is we don't know what we don't know going into the next year. So I would, you know, ask you to continue as we go through and continue this conversation. Continue to think about, you know, what you think students may need, how this support has really set the high school apart in terms of giving this scaffolding to these students. I think this is, Mrs. Ackman brings a good point up. There's different levels of these students within the lab and the in the co-taught classes that I would ask you to continue to think about based on what I'm hearing from the board. So, Mr. Seeney.
I just say we're often told to listen to the education experts, and I I can't imagine Dr. Adley bringing this forward with an intent that it falls apart on. It's going to be on his shoulders. I have the utmost confidence he and his team have put together a plan that suits the needs of our students.
Thank you, Mr. Seeney. Mrs. Stein.
I would just echo Mrs. Ackman's comment, and I think what I'm struggling with in the why now piece is given all of the conversations we've had around this table about how to address remediation in this budget. To me, maintaining team and lab for those two distinct group of students that sometimes intersect helps us next year capture students as they come in in ninth and 10th grade to see if they have deficits and they need support, we have options. So I'm really struggling with why now. I would probably wrap my arms around it better in a regular year, but given what we've had discussions about remediation, I'm struggling.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Mrs. Ackman, and then we we, you know, good conversation, but we do need to move on and from a budget standpoint, please.
This is a big part of the budget. And so I think to Mr. Seeney's point, yes, we often do hear, listen to the educators. And what the educators are telling us is this is a budget driven decision. So as a board of ed, we need to remember our duty and our by statute is to make the decisions that are in the best interest of children. And that's what those of us who are struggling with are struggling with. We have never directed the superintendent to bring in any number into this board table. So if the educators are saying, I'm doing it for budgetary reasons, then I think we need to listen to that piece of it, too. I think there's two. There's an educational model. And there's also, well, I'm feeling financial pressures, and then we have to weigh as the nine of us, how we want to go on it.
Mr. Seeney.
Our statutory role doesn't only stop at doing best for the children. I'll say that, although we strive to do so, we're in reasonable budgets, certainly. And again, I heard aspects that our administration brought forth that are also positive in the lab environment. So I'll just leave it at that.
So some of this is, so again, I don't want to be flippant in any capacity, so I would, I hope I didn't give that impression. But in order to do some of the things that we're doing and continue to move the district forward, this is one of the things I felt that we could do that would not harm the kids. You've got tremendous resources up there, but I respect all the positions that people are saying. In order to do some of the things that we have to do, I have to make those pieces work. And certainly, if all the reductions we made, the board wants to put back in and on top of the stuff that we have in there, I would be sold with that. And if the community would like to support that, that would be tremendous.
I think if it's, if it's, you know, my view and some of the other things we talked about this evening, if it's a continued evolution of moving the district forward, I understand that. And that's, you know.
But at this table, we did say when we did the five year plan, don't be bringing a number in beyond, like, when you looked at that number, I I mean, it's just, that was, but that's not a directive you're giving, right? So I would not bring anything. I would bring what I need to the district.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Just, you know, following up on Dr. Adley and Mrs. Ackman's comment. We can't lose sight that the biggest driver of our budget this year is the modified contracts. And at some point, if we're going to give on one side, we got to take on the other if we're going to keep this within reason. And so we can't lose sight of that. So if the admin has that in mind, delivering services that they feel are where they need to be, and and we do have a reality, and we do have tax payments and other responsibilities, and we can serve our students responsibly and also address that at the same time, that's our jobs, I see.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Thank you all for the good discussion.
Alan, Alan, thank you for for standing so so late. Thank you very much and all your.
Thank you.
Mrs. Dunn, thank you for late night with the Board of Ed.
It's okay. Thank you for your support. Thank you very much.
All the hard work by you and your team over the last week or so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, continuing to move through, see follow up questions and discussion regarding the 2021, 2022 proposed Board of Ed budget. My suggestion is to kind of keep us on track here. I've got Mrs. Ritchie and Mrs. McCammon will keep some type of track of some of what we talked about. Okay, let me, let me.
I just had some questions on the answers to our questions, so I didn't know when you're going to fit that in. That's my question.
Okay. Where I was headed was we'll go, as we, when we go through the process, we'll just go RC by RC like we did on that Saturday. And it opened up to board questions and comments on each RC, but we will start with just anything from a board perspective on the questions that have been presented and answered, and we'll open it up for that conversation. Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie.
Just really briefly, because I know it's getting very late. We, the administration, and I just, I think I followed up on an email with this, the administration provided some benchmarks for COVID funding. And I just was, for the expenditures, do we know, and you can answer this another time, do we know how many of those have been appropriated and how much?
So Westport did in the fall ask for an appropriation of 1.2 million, and they did receive it from their funding bodies. They're also using about $700,000 out of their cafeteria fund. So of that $2.6 million, about $1.9 million was identified. They are also a district that has a non-lapsing account, so they are using a portion of their non-lapsing account to address that. I will say, Westport, their goal is to bring students back in February, so they do anticipate that $2.6 million growing should that sustain and the kids come back. New Canaan did ask for $2 million in the fall and received it. They are also utilizing about $400,000 out of their cafeteria fund to fund the balance. Wilton, which we did add.
I'm sorry, Rich, what was that number?
New Canaan did receive 2 million, and they're using about $400,000 out of their cafeteria account to fund the balance. Wilton is anticipating that they're going to ask for an appropriation in March for about a million dollars. They did pre-buy a significant amount of items in fiscal year 20, and then took the savings in their budget to offset this deficit. And then they are also using some money in their cafeteria account to offset this. Ridgefield did get approval for a non-lapsing account from the town, and they're using the majority of that non-lapsing account to fund that deficit, and they are freezing accounts in the district, which will then accumulate savings and then transfer into the COVID account. Weston did also get approval for a non-lapsing account, which they are using. They are weighing whether or not they'll ask for an appropriation probably in the April timeframe. I have not heard back from Greenwich as to whether or not they will be asking, when they will be asking for it.
Thank you, Rich. Great information.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have one more question.
Okay, Mrs. Ritchie.
It's just, I'm, I'm trying to reconcile the capital budget, and you had provided a chart detailing what what was coming back in from last year, and my numbers just don't match. So I think the the disconnect is the the sidewalk in Blacktop at Henley. I don't, I don't know if, I'm coming in at 523, that was cut from the Board of Finance out of the capital budget. So I'm just curious if all of that is coming back to our capital budget this year.
So a portion of that is Mike did expand the scope of that paving, which is why we didn't include it in the capital deferrals. The amount I think for next year is about 150.
Yes.
The amount that came out was 50, but it's, he's really considering it almost like a different project, which is why we didn't include it.
Okay, but there was 50,000 in there for that project, and it is now 150,000 because it has included other projects. Okay, I just wanted to make reconcile my numbers. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. All right, if we move forward then, we can start looking at RC by RC. So let's go to RC one, Darian High School. Questions or comments from the board?
Are we just doing ad cuts?
Yes.
So can you just walk us through this process for those? Are we just calling out RCs that we may or may not?
We're going to go, we're going to go just through each RC. There may be nothing on our seat. We'll write through it, but just to keep in this order, and then I'll open it up to the board.
I'm sorry, but what are you looking for?
I think we should be giving account numbers and.
Yeah, provide an account number and provide an add or a cut.
But we're not voting, no action.
There's no action this evening. This is to start the conversation around it. Mrs. Ackman.
Typically, we go line by line with the account.
No, I remember that, but I just want to make sure.
So that the public knows, the public here.
What's that?
Mrs. Stein.
Okay, Mrs. Stein.
I was ready to start.
Okay, right. So just, just to get board consensus here to Mrs. Ackman's point, do you want to go line by line on this or RC and each person call out the specific?
We go RC.
Right.
And people call out their lines.
Yeah, good. All right. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Thank you. All right, so we'll start with RC one, Darian High School. Mrs. Stein.
I have two additions, Rich, line 110118, English teachers to reinstate the point two. I think I'm doing it right. And then under social studies, 110142, to reinstate the point eight. I don't know because there's, it's hard.
Rich, do you, you know, do you need dollar?
So there's, there's benefits tied to each person. So the team teaching represents about 80,000 for each subject area.
Okay.
So you'd be looking at 160 for each point.
Oh, thank you.
So you'll.
So it's point eight and point two.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein. Any further questions or discussion around?
Just to clarify, so putting in what Katie's add, that you do not, you do not want to take out the team teaching. That was.
Correct. I'm up for, I I'm putting it on there for discussion and perhaps for the high school. I'm up for, I'm putting it on there for discussion and perhaps for the high school to use the staff as needed based on the needs of the student next year.
Great. I agree.
Thank you. Any additional discussion around RC one, Darian High School? Okay, Mrs. Ritchie.
I'm sorry. 21306, Teachers of the Gifted. I'm flagging that $14,953 just for further discussion.
All right, moving on to RC two, Fitch Academy. Any discussion on RC two, Fitch Academy?
I'm sorry, Mr. Denise.
Yes, Mrs. Akman.
RC one.
Yes.
I wrote it down on the wrong RC. The library media specialist, sorry, I wrote it in the wrong RC. I wrote the wrong code. Reinstating a library, the library. Sorry, I wrote the wrong thing, so.
Is that 21603?
No, no, 21603 is team. So the cut of the library media specialist down to the middle school.
So that's the para.
The para. And we put that on for discussion.
21603. I'm sorry, what is it?
21603.
Teacher.
Maybe that's where I got confused because I had that for the.
Yeah, there's a cut, there's a, a cut of 1FT there. All right.
Thank you.
So you're putting that on for further discussion.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, moving along, going to Fitch Academy. Any discussion on Fitch Academy? All right, thank you. Moving along to RC three, Middlesex. Any discussion around Middlesex, RC three? Rich, just what I've got flagged here, and I think we've had this discussed, but just clarity again. I think we broke out over the last couple of years, this whole conversation around substitutes. We've been, gave a great explanation on substitute teachers and building substitutes. But again, the increase in the building substitutes, 213108. There's two building substitutes at Middlesex. Is that just? What is that increase tied to?
So there's two. I mean, the reason why you say $14,000 this year is the inability to retain the building subs. So the 23 is assuming we're going to retain the building subs for a typical amount of time.
Okay. Thank you. No, I am not. Thank you. All right, any further questions on RC three, Middlesex Middle School?
Same thing, the library media specialist at the middle school.
So Tara, what line, what number is that again?
I'll be really good after that.
Is that 21603?
2141.
2141.
2141. You're flagging that for further discussion on the reduction of the 1FT.
I'm adding it back in.
You're adding it back in. Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion on Middlesex? All right, moving on to RC five, Henley. Any discussion? Mrs. Stein.
Um, Rich, these will go across all the elementaries for me. I'm going to, I'm sorry, my glasses. 21603, an addition of 31590. And to go with that, 21608, a reduction of 32,400 in each of the RCs. So the, putting pairs back for lunch monitors.
So just to recap, Mrs. Stein, you're taking out the lunch monitors and putting it back into the teacher aides, the pairs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on RC five? And that, Mrs. Stein goes, that cuts through all the RCs for the elementary schools. Thank you. Moving on to RC seven, Homes. Any further discussion there over and above Mrs. Stein's? Mrs. McCammon?
Yes. Sorry, I'm looking for the line of intramurals.
That's all right.
It's in RC 11.
Oh, sorry.
Are you good?
I'll be back.
Okay, good, good. Any further discussion, RC seven, Homes? We'll move on to RC eight, Ox Ridge. We have the same for Mrs. Stein across there. Any additional discussion on Ox Ridge? Thank you. We'll move to RC nine, Royal. Again, carrying over Mrs. Stein's comment. Any additional discussion on RC nine, Royal? Thank you. Moving to RC 10, Tokenique. We'll continue to carry Mrs. Stein's comment. Any further discussion on RC 10, Tokenique? Thank you. We'll move on to RC 11, Athletic Health and PE. Discussions on RC 11, Physical Education. Mr. Seeny?
This came out from Board of Finance and RTM Finance Committee. 102001, and the allocation of off-site rentals. I don't know how to verbalize this or account for it, but there were a couple of teams that did not have the cautionary arrangements. So I think it was the two swimming teams. So if we could put the discussion to have the 30/70 split on those two teams, I'd like to do that.
Did you capture that, Rich?
Yep.
Do you need any more clarity? Okay, Mrs. McCannan.
101008, Intramurals Elementary to cut.
Any specific amount or just for further discussion?
The full line.
Full line?
Only one school.
Okay. Any further discussion on RC 11? Okay, moving right along. RC 12, Maintenance. We'll open it up to discussion. Mr. Maroni.
12001, Consultant Services. Yes.
Okay. Are you giving anything specific, Mr. Maroni?
The whole thing to, for the, for the.
Dennis, we can't, sorry.
200,000 for the, for the facilities.
Okay.
So you're leaving the six.
Yes.
Okay. So you're putting on the table to not move forward with the building condition survey?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Maroni. Any further discussion, RC 12, Maintenance? Yes. Go ahead, Mrs. Ritchie. So I, Rich, and I don't know if Mr. Lynch is on. So I had one note here, just the, again, we might have discussed it, 73020, Replacement Furniture. Year-to-date, we haven't spent all that much. You're estimated to spend 20, but then you're bumping it back up to 45,000. Right?
Correct. So because we cleared out a lot of the furniture in the schools to maximize space in classrooms, we didn't buy furniture because a lot of the furniture now is storing Xboxes.
Right.
Because we're assuming the normal school year, we're restoring it back to the normal.
Understood. Okay, thank you. Moving on to RC 13, Music. Any further discussion on RC 13, Music? Okay, we will move on from RC 13, Music. We'll go to RC 14, Art. Further discussion on RC 14, Art? Okay, we will move on to RC 15, Technology. Open it up for discussion on technology. Mrs. Ritchie.
Account 123021, new computer equipment, decrease to iPad purchases of $11,760, which is a reduction of 24 devices. Also, that same account number, decrease to the K1 displays. That is $88,400. And then also a decrease to the desktops to defer all but the classroom teachers. So that will be a reduction of $10,065. I don't know if my math is right, but that's what I have.
So Mrs. Ritchie, could you just repeat that again with the line numbers, please?
They're all account, well, I don't have a line number. They're all, they're all account 123021.
And they're RC 15?
Yes, RC 15.
The equipment, yeah.
Yep. Okay. So Rich, did you capture those?
Did you get all?
Did you just get the, the last one? So I, the iPad is 11,675, the first grade displays.
Oh, okay, I had 11,760 for the iPads and then 80,400 for the displays and 10,065 for the desktops. And that is to just do, to reduce, keep the classroom teachers in.
Any further discussion on RC 15?
I didn't understand that last part, keep the classroom teachers in. I'm sorry.
Because they're purchasing for the special teachers as well. So I'm keeping all the desktop, desktops in. I did, I don't know if my math is right, but I went through and determined how many sections there were, and I kept just the classroom teachers in, but I removed out the other desktops.
Thanks. Okay, moving along, RC, Mrs. Stein.
I was on the next RC.
Okay, good. RC 16, Administration. Mrs. Stein.
Account 12001, Consultant Services, 18,500, cut for the demography report.
I believe the demography report is $10,000. Is that right, Rich?
Yeah.
Sorry, you might want to modify your cut to 10,000.
I'll modify it to 10,000.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein.
No, I'm sorry.
1200.
Thank you.
So Rich, just high level in terms of where we're trending on legal services. And then a decrease, again, tough to forecast the unknown, but I'm just concerned about.
So the decrease.
Next year.
So the decrease is, we don't have any contracts to negotiate next year.
You did say that, okay.
Normal school year, so that's one reason.
Okay, so that's kind of specific to those costs.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any further conversation on RC 16, Administration? Moving to RC 17, Health. Any discussion on RC 17, Health? Mrs. Ritchie.
Sorry, so. I have some things that I'm going to put in. It'll get exciting toward the end, but I'm not really sure where to put them because they're COVID-related, but they all, they could, and I guess I'll look for guidance from maybe Rich and Administration on this. Because I'd be looking to put in additional PPE, and this would be for COVID. So do you want me to put it into R17, or should we put it in to the COVID RC?
I have similar. Do you want to maybe handle it under RC 28?
I would, let's handle it under COVID.
Okay, gotcha.
And then we can decide if things need to change thereafter. Okay, thank you. So anything else specific to RT7, RC 17, Health? Moving on to RC 18, Personnel. Any discussion, Mrs. Stein?
On account 2301, Classroom Teachers. It also goes in other accounts. I'd like to add a second teacher in residence for 80,720 in the appropriate accounts.
So Mrs. Stein is adding a second teacher in residency. Rich, what line is that in?
So it's in 21301, and then inducing memberships, 13013, and then there's health insurance.
So is the, the membership cost is, is.
Is the correct.
It was 10 or 13,000 dollars? Is that per person or just, that's per person? Okay, just so everyone understands that.
Well, I guess, Rich, just make sure you're adding all across all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seeny?
3100, a cut of 144890, the budget control. Fully flat, basically.
Sorry, John, you're on budget control?
Yeah, didn't you say finance?
I just couldn't hear you.
Yeah, Personnel, 3100, 31, 31000, Budget Control. Rich, do you have that?
What was the email?
Basically, I cut it in half, 144890. Yes.
So just on that, Rich, we usually use a dollar amount for FTE for budget control. So I'm just curious how the map will work, since it wasn't an FTE reduction, it was a dollar amount.
So we have the equivalent of four FTEs.
Yeah.
That may step in.
Two.
So we would do two with.
Okay.
Half.
Any further discussion on RC 18? All right, thank you. Moving along, RC 19, Curriculum. Any questions on RC 19, Curriculum? You good, Mrs. Ritchie? Okay. Moving to RC 20, Finance. Discussion on RC 20, Finance. Okay, moving along, RC 21, Library and Media. Any further discussion on RC 21, Library and Media? Moving along, RC 22, Technology Education. Any questions on RC 22, Technology and Education? Okay. Moving along to RC 23, Summer School. Open it up for discussion on RC 23, Summer School. Okay. Moving on to RC 24, Special Education. Open it up for discussion on RC 24, Special Education. Mrs. Akman.
Line 21309, we're looking to restore about $10,000 to take it back to last year's level. And line 21311, restore, it looks like same thing, restoring back to last year's level, $7,589.
Thank you. Further discussion, RC 24, Special Education. Okay, moving along, RC 25, Fixed Expenses. Further discussion on RC 25, Fixed Expenses. Mrs. Stein.
Account 52001, addition of 176904 for further discussion as a placeholder.
Say the number again, Mrs. Stein.
52001.
In the dollar amount.
And the dollar amount is to, the two buses at 176904 for further discussion.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Parent?
That was mine.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Parent. Any further discussion on RC 25, Fixed Expenses? RC 26, Early Learning Program. Further board discussion, RC 26, Early Learning Program. Okay. Moving on to RC 28, COVID Expense. Open it up to discussion on COVID Expense. Mrs. Ritchie.
So it's, it's, it's account 3100, Budget Control. I'm gonna, I want to add four FTEs. So I believe that's two hundred and eighty nine thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars.
So. There's no budget control on this particular RC, right?
There isn't. So I guess that was my question.
So we would have to just add the account to the chart of.
Right, you could add that account to this RC. Okay.
Okay, Mrs. Ackman.
So I don't know, Mrs. Ritchie, if you're on the same thing I am. So maybe correct me if I'm wrong. I think we have to budget for COVID. We are not allowed to budget a deficit. We know we're going to have COVID expenses. And so I don't know whether we start lines under COVID or, Mrs. Ritchie, if you're adding to budget control because of COVID, if you want us to add throughout the budget. But we know we're going to have PPE. I mean, I'm looking at, if we think we're going to have a stipend for the nursing director, we have to knowingly budget for it.
Yes.
And last year was an anomaly. We didn't know we'd ever need a hotline, but. This legislator doesn't allow us to budget for that.
I agree.
So I would put in money at least for half a year. Sorry.
No, it wasn't called. Well, and that's, I mean, if people would like a further explanation, that is exactly where I'm going with this. We know COVID is going to be around in the fall. I wish we could switch a light switch and it would be gone, but just based on the fact that our teachers are already being delayed with their vaccine. Children trials are barely just beginning, so our children will be vaccinated. I envision that COVID will very much be with us in the fall. And it is our responsibility to prepare prudent budget that takes into all of our anticipated expenses. We don't budget for appropriation and we cannot exist with a deficit, so I'm going to be adding COVID expenses. And I applaud the administration for not including them. We were given some guidance that puts a budget pressure on us, but it's not realistic. We will have expenses for COVID and we must budget for it. So that's what I'm going to put in.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. Mr. Roodel, just your thoughts from a finance perspective with stuff like budget control, just from tracking and accounting. Adding a line item to RC, this RC with respect to like budget control.
So we can add any any account or any object account that's within our chart of accounts to.
Okay, all right. Mrs. Ackman.
So my recommendation, or at least how I looked at it, was I would rather create a COVID RC. And therefore, if we don't use it, if something's wrong, if that magic switch gets turned, it's returnable because we can say we're, I mean. It doesn't have to, but we could go forward in good faith saying this is for COVID, but I don't, I don't know how we enter a school year pretending COVID doesn't exist, so. I think we have to budget for it. My preference, but I open to ideas, if anyone supports this idea, would be to put lines under COVID. So it's very trackable, just like we did this year, and it's not seen as sort of. Oh, it's not seen as a way to get a whole bunch of money into the budget. People could track and follow, but. I'm concerned. It's the only thing we can really be personally held liable for.
I think Rich and your and team have done such a great job with tracking the COVID expenses, so I think. A logical way to go is to have the COVID RC and whatever we feel we need to put in there, like budget control, we set it up that way. So it's specifically tracked. Mrs. Parent.
I was just gonna say, I agree. We cannot. In good faith, we cannot budget for appropriation. I don't, COVID's not going away. I would propose maybe doing half a year's worth of nursing, custodial, PPE, supplies. Just so that maybe by January it'll go away, but it's not going to go away by September, so I'll just throw that out there.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent. Mr. Brown.
Just in terms of further discussion, Rich, if there's any like best practice gap guidance, anything as to how. We should be looking at this, I'd be happy to be, if you could share that with us, if you have it, when you have it.
I mean.
That does actually right here.
So the one item to consider is it would be a factor in your MBR. So Connecticut does have a minimum budget requirement. So if you have, you do budget COVID and you don't use COVID, that's part of your base budget when you do your fiscal twenty three budget. So in Connecticut, you can't reduce an appropriation for a school district beyond what they got the prior year, with the exception of a formula for declining enrollment. Based on the influx of students anticipated from New York right now, we're not really rejecting a declining enrollment. So that would be the one consideration to make is the impact on your MBR.
So making sure I got that right.
It's a big doozy right there.
So you can't.
So if I.
Your MDR.
That changes it.
All right, let let one person at a time. So Rich, so thank you for clarifying that. Any guidance you can continue to give around that?
So if you do choose to budget for COVID and then you don't use it, you could obviously return it to the town. It's just, you need to know that when you prepare your fiscal twenty three budget looking out. So for example, if you were to budget two million dollars in COVID expenditures and you use zero, you have a two million dollar credit in fiscal twenty three. Which could artificially change how it looks. It's unlikely that maybe you'll have a two million dollar or less ask in fiscal twenty three, so your budget won't be negative. But you, in Connecticut, you cannot have an appropriation less than the appropriation you got the year before.
But it can be flat.
So it can be flat.
It can be reduced under circumstance.
The harder, there's no guarantee with us, but. I wouldn't, I wouldn't relate the possibility of getting legislative relief on that in terms of the COVID expense, but but there's no guarantee in that.
Don't worry, I'm not coming with two million dollars.
So Rich, all right, let's get back to raising hands in one person at a time. Mr. Seeny.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we need as a board to look at this a lot more closely. Our superintendent did not come to us with this request for the budget. I think we should broaden the discussion to other townwide agencies and how they'd like to handle it. We're going to talk about how to appropriate for. Significantly unusual circumstances and it's a large dollar amount, so given that MBR. I think we got to be really careful in how we're budgeting for this and not just throw line items in. As a board without the recommendation from our superintendent.
So Rich, just in all the great information you've gathered from our other districts. Has this conversation been had or if not, can you see if you can get us some intel as to how those conversations?
So most districts are budgeting for a non-COVID year.
They are.
They are, assuming certain COVID expenses will carry over like we are. So for example, Zoom. Every district in the DURG, with the exception of Wilton, who hasn't issued their budget yet, is assuming that they're still going to need Zoom next year. They're assuming that they're still going to need teacher devices and student devices that might not have been in place prior years. But they're not assuming that if they added staff or if they had deficits in their cafeteria fund. Additional custodial overtime or PPEs, for the most part, they are not adding it. Richfield did add in an allocation for PPEs as a small carryover expenditure, but for the most part, nobody is budgeting for COVID.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Rich.
Can I just?
Mrs. Ackman.
I'm sorry.
So how do they handle the deficit concerns?
You would have to ask for a supplemental appropriation again if that happens, similar to this year.
So in that instance.
Can you get closer to my camera?
In this year, because there was so much unknown, we could carry over, but at least the way this town worked. We were not even allowed to go buy new boilers unless the money had been approved, encumbered and was being held. So how would we hire teachers? And so maybe it's not COVID, it's where Mrs. Ritchie started, adding to budget control, but how would we go about hiring teachers all of a sudden if we needed them? Because we can't keep hiring people when we don't have the contractual money as part of the appropriation.
So there are districts in a normal year where, let's say, enrollment spikes who don't have budget control. The Board of Ed requires that the superintendent essentially find the money. That could be freezing positions that are vacant in a period. It could be freezing discretionary accounts like supplies, materials, consumables. Things like that always put a strain on a district because you want consumables and you want supplies for the very reason to, you know, keep your district running. As I mentioned earlier, when the question was asked about appropriation that towns have sought, Wilton, for example, this year froze accounts in August. So that would be the way that you would have to essentially find the money. If it's too much to find, you do have to have that request to your financing bodies like the Board of Finance and RTM for supplemental appropriation.
So my concern here, and this is what brought it up, is that I'm very close to recommending or at least wanting a discussion on freezing accounts until we have the appropriation this year. I don't know that I want to well, and that will be a board discussion, but that's what's been percolating in my brain. And having a complete embargo until we have our appropriation. So how would we start a year, welcome kids back into the building and then say, by the way, we need to freeze accounts because we can't run a deficit? So I agree, two million dollar with MDR is. Would be irresponsible, I think. But I think if we don't have something, we could be freezing our accounts in September, right when we're asking kids to walk through the doors. If we need to hire staff because we haven't asked for that appropriation.
Mrs. Ritchie.
I just want to clarify because I thought I read that New Canaan actually was budgeting for COVID for a half year, so did I read that incorrectly?
So my understanding is that they're not. They're budgeting for school start time change for half a year. That is included in their budget.
Okay, just that they're up over five percent and I was.
Part of that is, so it's a combination of two things from what we were told. They have a significant and sizable increase in health insurance. In New Canaan, which is over a million dollar increase in their budget. And then again, they are pushing for a change in school start time with the elementary and secondary schools. And they're proposing doing it for essentially a half a year, starting it in the second half of the year, and that's adding bus costs, driver costs and things like that.
Mrs. McCann.
While I appreciate being organized and prepared in advance. I do think that this has been one of those situations already where we have had to be fluid on a regular basis. And circumstances have changed underneath us and we certainly have all lived that. So I do think that we do need to be talking about this, but I don't think that unless Rich comes. I would love to maybe talk about this more formally next meeting and that I would propose that we table this for next meeting and Rich could get back to us. Because at the end of the day, we can't, we can see in special education where there are COVID expenses built in there and we only have done half of the PPTs. We don't know what we don't know and we've talked about that. And yes, there are probably some things we can anticipate, but there are many things we can't. And we don't know what the landscape is going to look like. So I think probably what we need to do is recognize that that's the situation we're in and talk about the best parallel processes moving forward.
Thank you, Mrs. McCann. Dr. Adley, any any insight from speaking to other supers or direction?
No, Richard has sort of summarized what the what the various districts are doing and that's. They're not uncommon like this. I'm trying to delineate things, but it's not a part of the operating budget at this point. Most across the state are doing that.
Okay, Mr. Seeny.
I'm just confused with the freezing accounts comments because we just, we're going to do an appropriation request for two point four million dollars. We hired, I forgot the number of FTEs at the beginning of the year and we're able to sustain that through, we're at almost February now. So maybe we can discuss that at the next meeting also as well.
Mrs. Ackman.
So it's it's my comment, we did because it was such an unusual year, but that was an incredibly unusual process, at least for Darianne to do. Typically, we would have had that had that money encumbered and identified and or transferred out of the accounts before we went out. Which is often why in the summer we give permission to human resources up to a certain amount to go out and hire, and we've had that conversation. So given the unusual state of the year, we were flexible, to Mrs. McCann's point. We were nimble where we needed to be. I just think and just put it on the ad cut list. We don't, I mean, we can get more information. I think that's fair. But I think we need to consider some reasonable, explainable, not, you know, two million dollar. Because we can't keep running. An appropriation which which doesn't contemplate hiring staff that we think we might very well hire, like. Or we need to boost up budget control for that very reason, to give us the flexibility to do it. But. I'm just saying, as a board member, I'm not comfortable because at some point we have to start running a budget normally. We can't always say, well, we're on COVID, we're going to, we're going to continue to just kind of do things. A little willy nilly, which is what we had to do this fall and we did it. We did it well and we did it responsibly, but we we know we have costs. And I just think we know we have COVID costs. So if we know we have it, we should be going out to the town and being open with the taxpayers that we have it.
No, understood. Thank you for all the conversation. My my recommendation is, and somewhat in the interest of time too. Can members of the board forward to myself and Rich their, the COVID expenses that you've outlined?
Sure.
All right, and so we will get all the information together and then I think Rich, Dr. Adley will continue the dialogue. Get some more information from other districts, have a dialogue with other boards and town and committees to get their thought process around it. I don't disagree. I think it's something we have to tackle and put on the table. Those costs will be here come the new year and I don't want to tie. Anyone's hands for hiring what they need to hire to get the schools open or get the support that's needed for these kids. Does that make sense for everyone?
That's fine. Mrs. Ritchie and I may have different ones, so we can both send them in and.
Yes.
I have something else on mine.
Instead of, you know, going line by line, you know, we'll continue the dialogue about building a specific COVID RC. We'll get all the information together about what you wanted to put in that COVID RC. And so we have that information built out, Rich, to continue the dialogue with the right boards and committees, maybe get potential more information. At the state level, Alan, so we can make more of an informed decision as we go forward, but I agree with the dialogue. Yes, Mrs. Ritchie.
So I'd just add. Reiterate my concerns about budgeting for an appropriation because that is essentially budgeting for a deficit, so that's my concern there. We can certainly have discussions with other town bodies, but there is a process and as the process moves along. If situations change, it can always, we can always go to the RTM or the Board of Finance and say, we can, we can adjust this number downward. But my my thought is we have to budget for it because it will be there and it is prudent to do that, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie.
All right, I gotta say one more thing.
Yes, Mr. Seeny.
The words willy nilly were used. I think we were really diligent in how we were doing the transfers, just just to make that clear. And again, any additional budgeting that we're doing as a reserve, because these are not operating expenses, ongoing operating expenses. Do come at a cost to the taxpayer. These are uncertain costs right now. Thanks.
Mrs. Ackman.
So I apologize if my phrasing of willy nilly was, it wasn't, was taken incorrectly. What I was saying is how we typically are so stringent about how things are encumbered and already called out for. We had to be more fluid in understanding of the situation, so. Much like slush fund, I didn't appreciate. I'm sure you didn't appreciate willy nilly.
There we go.
It's eleven o'clock.
Yes, so it's eleven o'clock, so we'll move on. We're all getting tired and we'll move on. So thank you for the conversation around that. And I will just reiterate, thanks to Rich and his team, thanks to the board, the administration. The tracking of the expenses, how we progress for the year, how we maintain, continue to do the best with educating and keeping kids in school. We all should be applauded for that, so we can take that methodology and move it forward, but let's get a little more insight. Let's collect all the data. And we'll move forward with that. Any other questions or discussions regarding twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two proposed budget? We went through all the RCs, Mrs. Parent.
Capital or no capital?
Yes, yes. So we'll move to the capital budget.
Want to thank Mike Lynch and I just, I love his narrative and it's something that went into the book.
I hope he's on the phone at eleven fifteen at night.
Maybe he went to bed. He's really asleep.
She's upstate.
But I thank him because it's so descriptive and it's very comprehensive and. Thank you, Mike, wherever you want.
Yep. No, I agree. Thank you, Deb. So we'll open up for discussion around capital. Mrs. Parent, sorry.
Thank you. At Holmes, the new parking lot in the Curtis property, just a little more discussion on that. It's a priority three. And hopefully we'll be doing some work in that school in the future and wondering if it's, if we can.
Say that again, Mrs. Parent.
The homes, the parking lot, it's currently at a priority three.
Okay.
For further discussion why that's.
Why it's priority.
Why is priority three?
Okay.
Can it come in at wait?
Very good.
The one oh five? Yeah, okay.
Thank you. All right. Did you want, let's do this. Too many pages, right? So we'll start at the, just run through it quickly for all our friends that are still watching us. So I'm on page two oh four, so we go through the line items. We'll start at the Darianne High School. Any further discussion around capital associated with the high school? We'll move on to Middlesex. Any further conversations with respect to capital at Middlesex? We'll move on to the elementary schools. Further conversation around Capitol Hinley? Further conversation around capital, Hinley? Further conversation around Holmes, other than what Mrs. Parent brought to the table? Further conversation on Royal? Any conversation on Tokenique? We'll move to Central Office. Any capital conversation on Central Office? Any additional conversation on district-wide capital?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I don't, it's late. I don't know where this fell. Where was the copy room?
That's at Central Office.
Central Office.
I think we should put that up for discussion.
Okay.
I don't know where it is.
No, it's under Central Office. Renovate basement into copy center.
135.
Page 209.
So we'll have further conversation around that, Mr. Seney? Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? I know we ran through that fast, but any further discussion around capital? Thank you. All right.
Mr.'s name.
Yes, Mrs. Ackman, sure.
Go deal.
Excuse me?
I fully even go deal with the personal matter, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Let us know if you need anything. Thank you. Drive carefully, please, at this time in the ice. Any further discussions overall, 2021, 22 proposed budget? Good. So we'll move on to discussion on December 2020, 2021 financial report and possible action on proposed budget transfers.
Can I just make a comment? Sorry, I did, there were just a couple of questions that came in after we already published these. And so there, I can just, for ease, if I just resend them out to you just, is that okay?
Yes, good.
Because they addressed one there, a couple here.
Yep. Okay. We're fine with homework, taking stuff home to read. Thank you. Rich, Mr. Roodel?
Michelle, could you put up the reasons?
So we are forecasting a deficit of $2,092,166, or just over 2% of the operating budget. As you can see, the general education RCs are forecasted at a positive $363,000, special education RCs a positive $214,000, and then the reopening expenditures at a deficit of $2.6 million. Just to break down of the COVID expenditures, the operating account was a little over $3 million. We did receive grants of just under $500,000 to get total spending to 3.5. Transfers, including the ones before you tonight, of just under $650,000, brings it down to that $2.38 million. We did include a bridge from the prior month, so you can see what changed. We have some salary savings in an unfilled campus monitor position, an unfilled technology technician position, some salary savings in the lunch monitors due to remote scheduling. So when the schools are remote, we don't have lunch monitor, so we don't pay that expense. Some savings in the LPN, so at the elementary schools, when they were fully remote, we are not paying for those LPNs. The food service projected shortfall is about $388,000. Reduction in Plexiglas of about $15,000. Some savings in contracted cleaning, so again, when we go remote, so for example, that week in December and early January, we did not need the contracted cleaner, so we're not paying for those weekends. Slight increase in PPEs, a slight increase in technology, and then a slight reduction in the anticipated cost for boys swimming and gymnastics at the Y due to the shortened season. Salaries overall are negative $1,059,877. We do have savings in custodial overtime for not renting out our buildings to the YMCA, interns, the weight room, some clubs and councils that are not running, intramurals, some salary savings and turnover, contract support for favorable collective bargaining agreements, and again, reopening cost salaries of 1.4 million. Operating expenses are a deficit of $725,000. We have some savings in teaching supplies, the China exchange trip of $7,000, some athletic transportation from the fall season, sports officials from the fall season, some conferences that are not happening, music transportation from some competitions that are not happening, some recruitment fares that have been canceled, slight deficit in special education software, some savings in adult education contracted services with Stanford Public Schools, and then some savings in transportation and tuition in special education, and again, a deficit in COVID reopening expenditures of almost 1.1 million. Fixed expenditures are slight positive $9,700. Savings in transportation, this is due to a negotiated rate reduction for days that we are remote, slight increase in savings in property insurance, a deficit in unemployment insurance, and savings in utilities, which are really the sewer fees. Equipment is a deficit of $130,000. Reopening expenditures, again, of $155,000, savings in furniture, and then a slight savings in tech added and science equipment. Revenue as of this report was forecasted to be a positive $186,000. As Dr. Adley mentioned in his superintendent comments, the state of Connecticut did post their estimated revenues for fiscal '21. They are forecasting us to receive an excess cost reimbursement of $2,773,998. That would be a reimbursement rate of 83.54%, which would be the second highest reimbursement since 2009, when it was fully funded. The reasoning for this is they had originally anticipated a reimbursement rate of 67.5%. Their thought was that due to the closure in March through June of last year, a significant spike would be seen in special education costs for recovery services. As schools throughout the state have been either closed for remote learning or hybrid learning, the December 1 filings across the state of Connecticut have been significantly lower in excess of $15 million. That has resulted in a pot that's been unchanged by the state, less reimbursements being submitted by districts throughout Connecticut, and a higher reimbursement rate. So the next filing is March 1. If it is anticipated that March 1 filings for districts throughout the state of Connecticut will be higher as there's a hope that more districts will be in session starting in the spring, that reimbursement rate of 83.54% could decrease, which we really won't know until probably sometime in April. So the payment, the first payment is made in February, the second payment is made in May, so we'll have a better idea then. The expenses that we did submit did not change, but if this 2.7 were to remain, we would have $552,000 more revenue than forecasted, so that negative 186 would turn to a positive 366. There are 12 transfers for consideration of approval, 11 COVID and then one non-COVID. The first is for $19,832 to cover resource materials for math, and then savings from the China exchange trips and conferences and field trips. $1,990 for ELP materials, and then savings from textbooks, $978 for the reopening plan, $7,926 for COVID materials, $32,530 for literacy materials, and savings coming from some material accounts, clubs not running at the middle schools and elementary, and then some salary savings. $67,860 for the cost of YMCA girls' swimming, savings coming from fall transportation and athletics, fall sports officials, and no intramurals. $13,000 for the anticipated YMCA gymnastic cost, and that is savings from no intramurals. $41,760 for YMCA anticipated boy swimming's cost, and then again, savings coming from intramurals and the weight room. $32,163 to cover the cost of the connect boxes, which are storing our furniture in our classrooms, and the majority of that money is coming from savings in the furniture account. Then $33,500 to partially fund custodial overtime, and that money coming from the custodial overtime that's not being used for building rentals for the YMCA. $33,884 for police services, and savings coming from transportation due to remote hybrid schedules. And then the one non-COVID transfer is $28,000 for additional unemployment insurance, and this is coming from salary savings from our transportation position and some vacant
Any board discussion on the transfers that Rich did, as always, a good job on and at the finance committee meeting? Mrs. McCammon?
One quick question. Does the increase in unemployment insurance reflect anything significant?
So in, during the shutdown period, primarily in the summer, the state did allow individuals to file for unemployment if they lost considered part-time jobs. And so some of that relates to ESY, Darien Summer School. So we saw a large spike in July and August and September of unemployment insurance. It has tailed off as things kind of have stabilized. We are working to see if we are going to receive credits on our unemployment bill that haven't been processed yet. The federal government, as part of the stimulus, was to reimburse a portion of unemployment costs. We have not seen that yet, but that large spike that we saw in those three months is really what's driving.
Okay. Any further discussions on the budget transfers? Mrs. McCammon?
For something like that, which is, is it, is there any reason why we couldn't consider putting that as a COVID expense? Is that because we could possibly get reimbursement, or?
It's kind of one of those gray areas that we've talked about. I mean, it partially probably is due to COVID because we had a change in operations, and in part is not.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a motion to move the transfers. Mrs. Parent, second, Mrs. Ritchie, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Mr. Brown? Okay, thank you. Miss, Mrs. Ackman? Okay. All right, thank you all. Moving along, further discussion and action on Board of Finance appropriation request for 2020, 2021. Mr. Roodel and Dr. Adley put together a nice memo outlining, that was in the packet. Dr. Adley, Rich, do you want to add anything to that?
No, this delineated as to the conferences, expenditures, and forecast, and the board asked for a specific recommendation around the appropriation request, and it is, it's stated on your memorandum here, so we can read it out, or we can discuss something different.
So I'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Seney?
In the previous memo that you guys sent out, it had like language up to, that seems to have come out. I was just wondering if there is reason or if I missed something at the finance committee meeting?
No, actually, up to, I potentially could read that. It potentially could read that.
Okay, and then the second question is, do we, I was going to propose, actually, this is a proposal, maybe we put a minimum amount in, you know, basically, just because we've been told maybe it might come in two pieces, but I don't want a dollar, you know, sent the first tranche and, you know, the remainder to come late in the year. So it was just the thought process, whether or not that would be fit accounting standards, Rich, to put a range.
So you've spent, after grant reimbursement, 1.46 million. So I guess if you were to have a minimum, that would be your minimum. There are certain items that are in the projection on encumbered forecast, and it's really those hourly workers, so the lunch monitors, the part-time custodial services. So we expect those expenses to happen, but they're not typically encumbered. I will say, in part of the encumbrances, so there's really two types of encumbrances. One, where you've issued a purchase order, you're obligated to spend that exact dollar amount, but you haven't actually paid the invoice yet because you either didn't receive the goods or services. And then there's an encumbrance for the full year of items, and that would be an example like the LPNs or the contracted custodial services. So we're assuming that we're going to be using them for the entire school year. If we were to go to remote, for example, like we did that first week in January throughout the district, we would have to bring that encumbrance down, and then you would just see kind of like a, what we call a change order against the encumbrance.
So might I suggest that we put together a minimum of what we've already spent, and then the contractual encumbrances? As a minimum? If, if, that's the board's desire, sorry, jumped ahead.
So Rich, what does that, the $1,004.6 is what we've spent, and then if you add in encumbrances that are contractual, where does that get us?
If you give me a few minutes, I can.
Yeah.
Put that together.
Okay. I'll open it up for further discussion. Mrs. Ritchie?
So I'm hesitant to do that. The process is in an immediate process with the Board of Finance and the RTM, and I think up to 2.3 is where I would be headed. I don't, if they want, the Board of Finance and RTM can fund it any way they see fit, but I think the request is for up to 2.3 million, and that is what I'm comfortable moving forward with.
I think the one thing I would also throw out there is, as we've gone, we're moving forward with Dr. Adley's plan, I mean, if anything, expenses are going to continue to tick up in terms of transportation, more kids in the school, more cleaning, potential more PPE. So there's potentially more, and I don't know, Rich, I'm sorry, as you're calculating, if you've started to do any modeling or forecasting as March 1, we're back in school, what does that look like through the end of the year?
So the more we're in school, the better it'll be for the lunch program, for example. That 390 could shrink, obviously. Even though we're in school, some parents have concerns with students buying lunch in the cafeteria, just, just in terms of food being, you know, opened and prepped in the school environment. But the more we're in school, the higher the uptick we'll see. For example, just with the middle school being back, eighth grade class being back, and we saw a 20% increase just in one day in sales. So the more kids are in school, the better that'll be. So that's kind of a fluctuation number. Though the more we're in school, you also have the potential for more substitute costs as more, more staff could quarantine, so we might see that $49,000 number tick up a little bit. Those are really the variables that we'd have to look at.
And do you see, based on when we're in school in the fall, an increase in cleaning costs, or there may be people asking us for more cleaning?
So we are cleaning on the weekends with that contracted cleaning service.
Regardless of the amount of kids in school.
Regardless of the amount. So if we're not in school at all, then we don't bring them in, so that would be an area savings. We are buying more custodial supplies, which is factored into the forecast, more disinfectant, more mops, microfiber rags, things like that. For the most part, technology is pretty much done. We have the devices that we need to carry us through, the software. We haven't paid for the Zoom renewal yet. That's one of the items in the encumbrances. I mean, the real, the variability ones are going to be those contracted cleaning, the LPNs, the lunch account, substitutes, custodial overtime. Those are really the probably the areas that could change.
Mrs. Ritchie?
So just to add to that, as we move along the process, there's always the ability to adjust downward. I think when we say up to 2.3 million, as, as we move along in the process, if we find we're getting more ECR, we can, and we can adjust, you know, we can adjust the number accordingly. So I think saying up to 2.3 million gives us flexibility, and then as we move along in the process, as we achieve more savings, if we do achieve more savings, and if we do see more ECR money than has been budgeted, we can tell the Board of Finance and RTM, the numbers changed because of these things that at this point we cannot predict.
Mr. Seney?
I'm sorry, I'm confused with the process. Once we request an appropriation, if that appropriation is given to us, don't the funds come into our account?
So there would be a one-sided budget entry into RC 28. So if they approve $2.3 million, you'll see a $2.3 million budget line in RC 28. There's only one bank account, so there's not a Board of Ed bank account and a town bank account. We do a town Board of Ed reconciliation each month, and then and the cash kind of comes out. So it's not as if there's like an ACH of $100 million that comes to the board, or in this case, $2 million in appropriation, but it's just an allocation out of the town's general fund into the Board of Ed's operating company in that same thing.
But then we'd have to make another adjustment to whatever appropriation we requested downward, I guess.
Well, I'm sorry, just to clarify, so if we're still in the process with the Board of Finance and the RTM, and they haven't approved the full, the RTM could reduce the 2.3 down. So what I'm saying is.
Okay, that's a whole different story. Now I understand.
Mr. Brown?
So it's just a journal entry process?
I mean, effectively, the town would have to take it out of fund balance and then transfer it into us.
Just one other.
Mr. Seney?
We found out about this 550 ECR today, 550,000.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we found out.
Yeah.
This evening. And it's great, that was great news, by the way. How should we be thinking of that relative to this appropriation? I mean, it's a sizable number. So we can't record the revenue received in RC 28 because it's specifically related in excess cost, but additional revenue is the, essentially the same as when you have an appropriation as unexpended funds. And so what would happen is you would see your budget of 2.3, but you'd have revenue of 2.7 change. So you would have to make a, we would have to make a recommendation for a budget transfer, which would then bring up the budget for excess cost from 2.3 to 2.7, and then that differential go into the various RC accounts in COVID. It's not, it has nothing to do with a gap or accounting standards, because we're talking about budget as opposed to where you're reflecting the revenue. Gap would require us to reflect the revenue appropriately in special education, so you're not diverting that money, but you now just have excess money within your overall appropriation.
Thank you.
But again, it's still nothing we can bank on.
No, we won't know for sure, really, until sometime in April.
April.
So all the districts have to file their second round on March 1.
Correct.
And the state will look at what those filings look like in March 1. The assumption is that they'll probably be a little bit higher, and then that'll change the reimbursement rate, and then the allocation that's made to all 169.
So if districts move forward. So if districts move forward, reopen and get more organized around applying, then that 84% could decrease.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Good. I think in terms of the appropriation, I think outlining the 2.384, and as long as, and maybe we have to add it into the motion that they understand, to John, Mr. Seeny's point, what has been spent already, and then they're going to make their decision based on the information. That makes sense?
Yeah, I just want them to understand that, to your point.
Well, I've had conversations with them, and the one request was, which I think is why Rich, Rich has done such a great job with tracking, is they wanted to know specifically the dollars that have been expended. So I think as part of this motion, if we add the dollars that have been expended year to date as a line, as a FYI in there, but still go for the 2.384 million request. All right?
I think that's a wee bit convoluted, just from my point of view, but I don't mean that in a disrespectful way.
So that's why I was going for the minimum.
I just think, I think the Board of Finance has said that they are going to make us hold on valid COVID expenses. I don't know how more valid we can make them. We've delineated them. They're going to get, they're going to get the breakdown of each of them. So anyways, it's not up to me to what the...
I understand, I was just trying to make it as clear as possible.
But they're going to have the, they're going to have the actual, you know, delineation clear.
In order to keep things moving, do I have a motion from the board to move forward with the proposed motion? The Board of Education requests a special appropriation from the Board of Finance in the amount of $2,384,934 to fund reopen expenditures due to COVID, with any unexpended balance remaining in RC 28 being returned to the town's general fund. Mrs. Ritchie will make that motion. Mrs. Stein will second it. All in favor? That is unanimous. All right. Thank you all very much. Thank you for the conversation. We move on to first reading and discussion on proposed revisions to Board of Education policies. Mrs. Stein and Ms. Zion?
In an effort to be expeditious, given our late hour, I'm hoping everyone watched the policy committee meeting. We have five policies for review. The policy committee really didn't have any substantive edits. There were a couple of edits Mr. Brown asked to be made, which were made. So at this point, I'd just open it up to anyone. If you have any questions, to let us know, and we can bring it back for our next meeting.
Yeah, we'll say the policy had a good discussion and good questions asked, and thank you, Mrs. Stein and Mrs. Zion. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes with this. Mrs. Ritchie?
That's all I wanted to say. I watched your meeting. It was excellent. It was very informative. Thank you for the hard work and making it easy for us tonight.
So again, first reading and discussion. Any further discussion? So this will be up for action. Any questions or anything, just forward them to Katie or Mrs. Zion, so we can get them answered. Great. Continuing to move along, further discussion and possible action on the transportation study. I will open it up for further board discussion on the transportation study.
So I will just say at the policy committee, we did have a discussion about this, and the reason you're seeing it separate is because we felt it was really a decision to be made by the board. We briefly discussed sort of the options in front of us, one being leave the budget as it is, two, amend our policy to a 1.5 walking radius, which is a very permanent solution, and three, to contemplate the option two in the bus study and put in the two buses for study over the next year as to ridership and experience. And that's where the committee, the discussion, pretty much ended on option three to sort of bring up to the board the two buses. So that's why I put it in the budget as a placeholder for our discussion.
Mrs. Stein, too, were there any minor edits or updates to the policy that had to be done over and above this?
Yes, we had transportation policy updates, which you'll see they were, if you haven't seen, rewatched the meeting, so we don't go through it, but they were pretty pro forma.
Yes. Thank you. So I'll open it up for discussion or a motion on the transportation study. Mrs. McCammon?
I wonder, given, we just talked about the fact that we're going into potentially another COVID year, and so one of the things I was wondering was whether or not there is an opportunity to use our existing bus structure to maybe help some of the parents who might be interested in busing closer than two miles. My, part of my thinking in that is that maybe we could also use the time to explore what is and is not required. We talked about the fact that yes, you do have to provide transportation, but given that we can actually draw a geographical boundary, it is clear that the state does allow us some latitude in defining to whom we provide the transportation. So whether or not there is an opt-out model or something else we can be looking at, I think that we can use this COVID time over the next year to explore, just volunteering your time, but to explore how we might be able to maybe serve the needs of this population with the bus structure that we have.
Rich, any comments on that in terms of, I don't know how you look at the, I mean, it's a great question, but the, how you get any more out of the existing routes or buses that we have?
So assuming that ridership remains low, you would have to significantly lengthen the time the students are on the bus, because they would have, obviously have to travel farther. They're not all in one like cluster spot, they are all over the place. So you would be picking up high school students, obviously, a lot earlier. Since we're not talking about the elementary, it wouldn't affect the tier two and three runs, but you would potentially have high school kids on the bus instead of, let's say, 40 or 45 minutes, in excess of an hour, likely even longer than that.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. Mrs. Parent?
I just say I support option three of potentially putting in the buses and not having it be a permanent change right now and seeing what happens next year.
Mr. Seeny?
Sorry, I'm just clarifying, option three, the one mile.
No, Katie's after three of option two in the study. Sorry.
Yeah, I think along Jill's lines, we have no idea what demand's going to be for these two buses. I think it's, you know, again, from a fiscal standpoint right now, irresponsible, just put out two buses with no idea what ridership would be. Superintendent did not put it in this year's budget, and I realize it was, part of the reason was a parallel track of the busing study, but I really want to get a good look at what the demand might be with, when we get back to quote unquote "normal," which could be as early as next September or, you know, further down the road, as some people believe.
So option, go ahead, Mrs. Stein.
Go ahead.
But option, the option three, putting two buses in for kind of a test period without changing the policy?
Yes.
That's the proposal. Okay.
I guess my counter to Mr. Seeny would only be that a lot of the feedback we heard from parents was during a COVID year. So I'm not so sure that that impacts, but I am, I am, you know, proposing to put those buses in for a year and study them and revisit next year. That would be my preference.
Okay. Mrs. McCammon?
Do we have the ability to do an opt-in program? Do we know that for sure, that we can or cannot?
So you can do an opt-in, opt-out program, but if a student is bus-eligible by your policy who opts out and decides to opt back in, you do have to accommodate that student.
It, within what timeframe?
We gave 72 hours, so as long as it's a reasonable timeframe. Typically, we say 72 hours, but we can turn it around more really quicker than that. But you do have to accommodate them if they change their mind.
Mrs. McCammon?
Have we formally asked the families who live in that, in that area? I know we've had them come here, and certainly that's wonderful, but have we, has there been a formal ask from the district?
When the bus was added, really prior to what school was going to look like in terms of reopening, we did ask, we did have a number of people reach out to the transportation office to say we want to ride and we want to be there. As school reopened and a lot of the uncertainties, some of the people who have said they would ride simply did not ride, whether it's concerns for putting their children on the bus, or the parents are now maybe working from home and can drive their kids, we don't know. We do see an instance where certain days, the ridership is a little bit higher, and then certain days it's a little bit lower, which could be a product of maybe parents are working in the office on certain days and not the others. So the days they're working in the office, the kids are on the bus, the days they're not working in the office, they're getting a ride to school. But we did ask in the beginning of the year, but it's a little tough to say whether they would really commit to it, because the school year obviously was much different than expected.
I'm concerned with just adding the two buses and the cost of them without kind of continuing to look at what the need is in bringing, I like the idea of the 1.5 walk radius. It aligns with a lot of our, our other districts, but I am concerned about what the numbers would actually be, and to test those two buses for that dollar amount seems a lot for me right now without doing a little further information on it. Any other questions? Mrs. Ritchie?
No, I don't have any questions. I am in favor of the one and a half mile radius for the buses. I think based on the infrastructure we have in town, I think one and a half is a more reasonable expectation for children to walk. So I'd like to keep it, I'd like to keep that in the budget, but I guess what we need to do now is we should probably be putting on whether or not we move forward on one of these.
So is there a motion, is there a motion on the floor? Mr. Brown?
I would propose two separate motions, if I may, Mr. Chairman. The first motion I would make is I would propose we do not make any changes to our busing policy at this time.
Second?
There's a second there. Mr. Seeny, all in favor of that? Okay, that motion carries unanimously? Okay.
And the second motion I would make, Mr. Chairman, is that we add two buses for this year for a test phase.
Okay, is there a second on that? Mrs. Stein, all in favor? Mrs. Stein, Mrs. Ritchie, Mrs. Parent? So that motion does not carry. So with that said, we've not changed the policy, we've not added the buses. My recommendation is that we continue to keep this on the agenda for further study and have this as part of an ongoing conversation to get the data starting early next year, maybe work through some of the ideas that board members have brought back about a survey once we understand who those people are between a mile and a half and two miles, and get a buy-in to these buses and understand kind of the numbers. Is that a consensus of agreement?
Definitely.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for that conversation. Moving forward, further discussion and action on Board Master Agenda for February through August 2021. Any additional discussion, any additional additions to the master agenda? Mrs. Stein?
I would just like to ask that you, Chris, you look at a place where we could have the review of ideas.
Thank you. Mrs. McCammon?
Similarly, that we look at a place to put the bus discussion, and I know it's...
Yes, thank you very much. Perfect. Mrs. Ritchie?
On the February 23rd, it sounds like that update on strategic planning is going to be moved to...
That would be the proposal, I would ask the board if, I'll send out a wee doodle for you if you want, but I'm looking at potentially Monday, the 22nd. I just think that having that as part of a meeting is just...
Too much.
Please not.
Right. So, okay, so that would be something that would be off of the February 23rd meeting. Okay. Do we want to revise that now, or do we want to wait until we, how do you want to work that? Or do we need to revise it? Because it's just going to, it's not going to be on that February 23rd meeting.
Well, we can take it off.
It'll be a separate?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's what we discussed, a separate meeting, so we stay focused on it. All right. Any, Mr. Seeny?
A couple of accounting issues came up during this budget process that were kind of in and out, so I don't know how to define them, but around the Y agreement, and then also the student activity account has come up a couple of times, so we can throw that in.
Okay. I think those are good discussions outside of the budget. So thank you, Mr. Seeny. Mrs. Ritchie?
I'll just add on that, and I think I've spoken to Rich about this in the past, about our student activity fund manual. It hasn't been revised in a while, so I think just to add on that, as part of that process, to take a look at that, because that is something that hasn't been done in a while.
So, Mr. Brown?
I just, at some point, just following up on the Caves-Caps process, getting it on the calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I'm sorry, just the Caves-Caps process?
The evaluation process, the board evaluation, which we didn't finish, and the mid-year check-in, and just the overall process that we discussed last year. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Something just went right out of my head that I was going to ask Mr. Roodel on. Oh, or Dr. Adley, in terms of agenda items, curriculum, do we need to change anything on the master agenda with respect to how you want to look at and bring curriculum to the board next year? So it's not, so we have the discussion from a budget perspective, but we understand the changes of the updates to the curriculum a lot earlier than in the middle of the budget season.
Yes, well, it wouldn't be on, it wouldn't be on this agenda.
Okay.
But we definitely should do that.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to push beyond August.
And just to quickly add on that, so I had brought this up during the strategic planning meeting, and I've been talking about this a little bit, a curriculum committee, and is that something that we want to, with the strategic plan being put in place, do we want, is that something that the board would want?
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any further questions or discussions or adds with respect to the master agenda for February through August 2021? I think we've captured anything. So we need a motion to...
Unless you would prefer that it be brought back, since we have so many...
So I think with everything that we added, we'll bring it back for further action at the next meeting. Thank you, Mrs. McCammon. All right. Good. Moving along quickly so we can get done before Wednesday. Action items. Mrs. Zion? No action items, just wanted to double check. My eyes are blurry. Yes, exactly. Moving along, I will open it up. Our friend Michelle is still here, thank you. Public comment?
Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participant icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comment. You will have up to three minutes to comment. There are no raised hands at this time.
So with no raised hands before we move into Wednesday, may I make a motion to adjourn Mr. Seeny, second to Mrs. Stein, all in favor? That is unanimous.